You better call me better. Go ahead and have the call roll call first before we pray.
Counselor Cortez?
This is Sarah.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Orobesa?
Here.
Counselor Corn will be absent today. Counselor Moore?
Here.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Counselor Halverson?
Here.
Counselor Arnold?
Here.
Counselor Cabin?
Here.
Counselor Marrowbo?
Here.
Mayor Jennings?
Okay, um, okay, so we have the roll call, so now if we can round into the time of earth and open his hand and councilman. You want to go?
Yeah, I'll go first. Father God, we come before you to give you all glory and honor, Father God. We thank you for allowing us to be here, Father God. We ask you to give us wisdom on our decisions today, Father God. We ask for protection over our police officer, our sheriff, our ambulance, our firefighters, Father God, and our military, Father God. We lift them up to you. Where you lift up Bobby Corn to you, Father God, is a healing process. In all, we give you all glory and honor in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank everyone for being here. Uh, we have, uh, seven people signed up on the participation. Yes, they have two that are not signed up for any specific issue. Maybe we can get them a little early sometime to here so they don't have to wait for the whole meeting tonight at all. It could go, could go quick. Uh, we have a number of people signed up, I'm twenty-three and twenty-four, and those on the case, so if we can, uh, okay, so we can move forward on approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda for the April tenth through twenty-five regular city council meeting with the following changes. Move the following items from consent agenda, number twenty-six, to the appointment of Heidi Teppe to the Senator in Board Position One. Your first term is April eleventh through twenty-second, March thirty-first, point twenty-seven. Next change, make the following change at number eighteen, page one eighty-six, for the roll call vote, change the words present to yes. The next letter is poll item number five from the consent agenda and place it before item twenty-three, zoning case, BAC twenty-five thousand zero zero seven, vacation with East Nineteenth Street. Poll item number five, and thank you, Brian, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Council Lady Howison, a second by Council Lady, Councilman Haldenbrand. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the court will call the roll.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Marrowbo?
Yes.
Nine, affirm we've nominated, uh, the agenda has been approved as amended. Okay, next we have consent of the approval of the consent agenda, Council Lady Howison, item two.
Mr. Mayor, I approve to approve the consent agenda as amended for the April tenth point three five regular city council meeting.
Second.
Now, motion by Council Lady Howison, second by Councilwoman Cabin. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the court will call the roll.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Marrowbo?
Yes.
Okay, item two is going to be passed, uh... So now we go to item nineteen. So... Okay, for item nineteen, oh... Okay, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings, members of the council. We have with us tonight Zoe and Peter with Oracle NetSuite's to give you a presentation on some software that the city has been reviewing. We reviewed several software platforms over the last two years, and this one has really caught our eye, and we'd like to put this in for our council in the days and weeks ahead for consideration as a Tyler Munis product replacement. And with that, I'll let Ms. Zoe, is it your last name?
Shepman.
Shepman, give us a presentation for Oracle NetSuite's.
Thank you, Zoe.
Yes, ma'am, Zoe.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here today. To start off, my name is Zoe. For all of you who haven't met, I've been working with the city of Roswell, with Chad, with Tony, and the greater team over the past two years, and they've navigated looking through different ERP solutions. I'm an account executive at Oracle NetSuite Local Government. I'm also here with Peter.
Good evening. I'm Pete Ramus. I'm the Regional Director of Sales for Oracle Local Government. Thank you for having us, appreciate it.
All right, and today's presentation is going to be informational. I'm going to be telling you a little bit more about offering, pricing, numbers, and what's included in this partnership. You can begin. All right, you can skip over this one. So here's some numbers. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Oracle. We are the second largest software company in the world today. We have a hundred and sixty-four thousand global employees and eight-point-six billion annual research and development spend. Why are these numbers important to the city of Roswell? We are too big to fail and too big to be acquired. We are not going anywhere, and partnering with us is a safe and smart decision for Roswell. Also, I wanted to point out the eight-point-six billion dollar annual research and development spend. This shows our commitment to making sure our products stay the latest and the greatest year over year, and that you guys will never have to choose another ERP vendor ever again. This can also be shown through our demos and our investment in artificial intelligence. The Oracle product we are positioning for the city of Roswell is NetSuite. NetSuite was actually the first ever cloud-based ERP solution in the world. We currently have over forty-two thousand customers on NetSuite, all in the same version, and we are still considered the number-one cloud ERP, all of the, like, almost, actually over twenty-five years later, which is very impressive. So we've really paved the way for every ERP solution you've seen. That was started by NetSuite, and it really dominates every vertical it's in. All right, you can... So that's what brings us to Oracle Local Government. What we did was tailor this NetSuite platform specifically to meet the needs of small to mid-sized local governments like Roswell. Our team, whether it be me, Peter, implementation, product, um, the list goes on, we are a hundred percent focused only on local government agencies and your needs, so, you know, our implementation is only implementing local governments. Our focus is solely on you guys. And why we start this division, our goal was to empower and enable small to mid-sized agencies like Roswell with the best technology available at an affordable price point. I'll be going over some numbers later. But what we did was some industry research, and we saw that mostly small to mid-sized agencies, you know, under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand population, didn't have access to great software options, so we tailored NetSuite to meet your guys' needs through building out core fund accounting, GAAS income type reporting, the list goes on, utility billing. Customer experience is truly the forefront of our decisions here. We understand that this is a current, you know, pain point for the city of Roswell. We assure that will not be the experience with us. Not only will we be given a designated customer success manager from the month you sign with us, so, you know, no more hot potato with a different rep every time you guys call, but we have twenty-four-by-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day US-based technical support, so we'll be available, you know, fifteen minutes max relief times on that as well. And lastly, expertise, not only are we a hundred percent focused on local government agencies, but everyone on our team, especially like product, implementation, the list goes on, they've actually spent most of their career serving public sector ERP customers, so they really speak your language, and they're really passionate about this project. All right, let's go into a solution overview. Um, at first glance, this is pretty standard, what you can expect in a traditional government, you know, public sector ERP solution, finance, HR payroll, utility billing. A big differentiator here that really stands out to the city of Roswell is the AI bill capture. We've invested so much in artificial intelligence, and you just won't see that same level of investment in this same, um, this industry, and that's what we have now, and we promise you, over the next few years, this list will only multiply what we're doing with this, with this software. Utility billing is also something I want to talk more on, and I know it's a huge driver for the city of Roswell, and I have some more slides going over the benefits of that. All right, so our utility billing for customers your size, there's truly nothing like it on the market today. What we did was take Oracle Energy and Water, which is pretty much the biggest, you know, most widely used, um, utility software in the world. What we did was scale it down and make it suitable, directly built on the NetSuite platform to meet the needs of agencies your size, but using the same successful software. So it's intuitive with three-sixty-degree dashboard, powerful self-service reporting, fully automated billing, and this is on the NetSuite code. We're not using a third party for this, and you don't see this in the local government space, what we've done here. And might I add, our decision to build this platform into our software and spend that money shows our commitment to Oracle NetSuite, the local government. You guys can take a look. Here's some of the biggest names in utilities that are using Oracle Energy and Water, which the software is based off of. This is just an overview of what's included in our offering to the city of Roswell. It aligns with what was included in the finance, accounting, planning and budgeting, I mean, not planning and budgeting, HR payroll, utility billing, and AI bill capture. Something else I want to add is the sandbox environment. We also include in this package a test environment where you guys can play around with reporting, test different updates, upgrades, list goes on, before they get pushed out to the system. This helps users adapt this platform and learn without, you know, being afraid to alter real-time data. All right, here's what we're most excited about, and what you guys are most excited about. Through this offering, we were able to present a five-year flat rate of just under two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand annually for this software, including all four of these modules, all of the users, year over year. A lot of the time, software can increase, actually always, you know, every cloud-based software has an annual update. We were able to secure a five-year flat rate for the city of Roswell and bring a one-time implementation cost. This includes expenses. This includes all four modules being implemented at under five-hundred-thousand dollars for the city. Huge cost savings compared to your previous ERP implementation in year-over-year costs. I'll go more to depth on the next slide for comparison. All right, so these numbers are quite impressive. You can see a five-year breakdown of, you know, year one. You see that year one Oracle annual invoice is a little bit greater because that includes the implementation cost to build it, but years two through five is the same, you know, just under two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars per year over year. Compared to the Tyler annual invoice, you will not only break even here too, but you will actually save almost a hundred thousand by year two in switching to Oracle NetSuite for local government. And over this five years, a hundred and three-hundred-and-sixty thousand total cost savings over five-year term, and on average of thirty-eight percent reduction in year-over-year costs in switching to NetSuite. So I think, and not only this, you guys will actually be able to successfully use this software. We are super excited about this project with the city, and hope you guys are too, here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? One of the things that happened, you know, we've all had a little frustration dealing with Tyler, uh, but every time we wanted to do something with Tyler, there's an added charge, and they are real slow about adding, about coming forward and answering questions that we have about doing things, and every time they do it, there's an added charge. It was my understanding with Oracle, they will provide the help we have in a responsible timeframe, and there's not going to be an added charge to what we asked them to do. And, uh, which, I mean, that's been one of the things that I've been frustrated with with Oracle is, it's just like, one time we tried to print out a list of people having business licenses, and it was very difficult to get enough. And as we know, we now we have our, our chief clerk doing the business licenses, I believe. Though we did, we had for a while.
Yep. They're handled out of the community about that.
Anyway, we had problems doing that, just sending out bills, and, uh, that should be something that's easily done. It was one of the first things that I gave the officer, trying to find out what these people, nobody got a bill for their business license. You had to come in and figure it out, it was on the wall, and you had to come and pick it up. And, uh, so, I mean, that was just one of the first things, but every time we do something with Tyler, they're extremely slow to respond, if they do respond. So I, this sounds interesting to me from their system, right? From what I understand, that we would be the first, the Mexico unit to use that. So it might be a good opportunity for us to, uh, to kind of get it on the ground for a while. They have a number of places in other kind, other parts of the country that they serve. So, councilman?
Um, yes. The one-time self-integration, uh, can you explain it a little bit?
Oh, yeah, the one-time implementation fee?
Uh, the integration.
Well, that's the implementation, yes. So let's see, part of that is going to be integrations, part of that would be data migration, and it's configuration of the system, so that would be a one-time cost.
And it's pretty smooth, pretty smooth transition?
Definitely.
Yeah, I mean, you know, projects are never easy, but yes, uh, I, I, right now, we're getting agencies wide between, for full suite, which is basically what you guys are, twelve to thirteen months, which is pretty unheard of in this market. Usually it's anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four to thirty-six months, depending on Peter's doing business with. So I would say, uh, from a customer experience standpoint, yeah, we're, we're ahead of everyone else right now.
And Counselor Johnson, if I could chime in on that, uh, we've done some additional research, and, uh, God bless Zoe and Peter, we've beat them to death for about two years on this, and they've been with a test that was very skeptical as were the staff initially because of implementation. I've been through some implementations of my own. I've heard about the implementation of Tyler Munis software for the city, and in my opinion, this was never properly implemented to begin with, according to the account, uh, account code structure, our charter of accounts, accrual versus cash basis accounting, we're a governmental entity, we report on accounts.
That is important.
Yes, well, it's critical.
Oh, it's very...
And so I have to go and back out through the roll entries and get back to cash basis to report. It's crazy.
I bet Tony's going to love that.
I think she will love it. I think she'll be delighted.
And on a grand scale, uh, I'd want those to be small compared to the bigger picture things you guys have probably handled in the past, so it should be a smooth transition. I like that.
But what it came down to in my mind was, can we fix Tyler? Number one. Can we re-implement and fix Tyler? Or do we need to look at a new software and an, or an implementation of a new software product? And Mayor alluded to it. The problems are greater than that with Tyler. Getting a support help response through the help ticket in the system takes weeks or months, and that's unacceptable. And so, again, we've...
And I heard fifteen minutes.
We've called, they've provided us references, and we've reached out to several of those references. We're still going through that list, but for example, spoke to a technology director in Oregon who implemented this product, and he said he's been directly involved with nine ERP enterprise resource planning implementations, and by far, and his voice went up, NetSuite's implementation team will be the best, and he was adamant about that, as has been the other references, but it's telling coming from an IT director because that all directly will overlap. So we're feeling more confident as, as every day goes by, and we've worked with this team. Put just some basic numbers in front of you so you can see the cost variance.
Yeah, a few numbers for us. Thank you, Mayor. I think, you have one down?
Yes, Councilor Cortez?
Yes, sir. The AI integration of the future, AI involving the NetSuite, what are some of the basic applications we would see in our, for our systems and for our staff that you guys are seeing, and like, just an idea of what's possible there would be great, sir.
So what we have today, and what we've demonstrated for the city of Roswell, is utilizing AI for auto-mashing the bank of conciliations, automating accounts payable down the line. We are actually working on something for our budgeting software to actually write the budget book, that long-page thing that takes waste of time, no one really reads except for ten people. AI can save all the wasted days. That's just an example, and we'll keep you guys posted as we add to that list more. And with that module, as we push out updates, you guys aren't paying extra for those, because you guys are already purchasing that module, you'll just keep getting updates, more functionality to get you guys about those as they come.
Let me add, on the AI front, because I think that's obviously the, uh, the topic of the, of the moment, we're investing billions of dollars in AI. In fact, if you were to, right now, we are, you've heard of Stargate? So we are right now working with the administration, the Trump administration, on that project, and we're going to continue to do sort of more AI at a global level, if you will. So we'll be integrating AI into all of our products more and more. It's just the reality of where software is coming. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Moore?
I have a question, but I think you asked a part of the initiation, the affirmation, implementation, the phase, the stage. How many months, three months, I mean?
Gen- generally, it's twelve to fourteen months at this point for the full suite that we're seeing.
And how does the crossover change from like, are we going to be in the middle of Tyler and in the middle of NetSuite at the same time?
You need to cut over.
You still need to switch something, you need to switch accounts at a time, you switch those over like that instead of...
Well, you go, you go live with the new system, you cut over, and so you're going to migrate some of that data, that historical data over, right? Into the system, I think, three years maybe.
Correct.
And so you have ten years. Some of that's just going to go into a bigger repository. So if you need that information, you have access to it, but you don't really have to have it in the, in your system.
Okay, and the building, you know, we were talking about the water building, the numbers going up and down, the change in the price and all that, will this system make that much easier, uh, you know, if you want to come out, you know, just this price for this amount of time, this price for this amount of time? Do you need that in that system all at once?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll tell you that our water billing supervisor, Ernest, Alfred, is super excited about this. So we've had various staff, HR, IT, water billing, accounting, payroll, speak with NetSuite's team, again, from the research we've done and just the references, the way this would work is that essentially you'd have a weekly meeting with the implementation team, and they're going to be really close, and so if you've got a question, you can get that instantly answered, but we'll have really follow-up meetings with the implementation team, um, and checking off all the boxes as we go. And a wonderful thing, news to me in following these references, is I've asked them several questions. One of them, after implementation goes, walk, walk me through that process, what's that look like, what's the timeline? And they all have said, cleanest implementation I've ever been through when we push the button to go. So essentially, you're, you're building out this system in the sandbox, and you're testing it, you know, we call the sandbox. And once you push the button to go live, everything works. So I've never seen that personally in a software implementation, but I look forward to seeing that. but I look forward to seeing that and to hear that come from the references that we've spoken to so far was great news.
That was nice to see. And this increase of, this saving money saving is always helpful in our situation. So we look forward to seeing how this works that we've said.
If there are any further questions?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Porten, you want to go?
You go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to say thank you guys for, it was a great presentation during our finance meeting last week. And I really appreciate you guys putting up with Chad for a couple of years and trying to really help for Roswell. And I think this is going to be something that's going to be really big for the city of Roswell if we can get you guys put in place. And I think it's going to be some good stuff for all of us and the staff. So everything I've heard, I'm just glad this presentation is going to be as long as going to finance.
Did I cut it down a little bit?
No, but it was great. It was very informative.
It's easier being, you know, seeing people's faces, you know, if you want to cut it short, read it on people's faces rather than speaking into a dark hole.
No, good stuff. Thank you guys.
I can say we're equally as excited as well. We've got our team checking in. How's it going at Roswell? Good luck at your meeting tonight, you know, that they know who you guys are and are excited as well.
Councilor Harrison?
So I'm excited about having your software, but the general, they won't see most of what you do. So, and I know you can't migrate the user names and passwords over from Tyler to your software. So you're saying when we cut it, we're just going to cut it. Are they going to be able to set up, because I know it's going to be dependent on the city to inform people they're going to have to create a new username and password. So are they able to just do that early before it goes live? Or they have to wait until it actually goes live and then when they try to?
Well, you guys use Active Directory right now. Yeah, so you're using Active Directory. So we're going to basically integrate with that, with your current active.
Oh, I didn't know you were using Active Directory with Tyler?
My understanding is.
Oh, well, so that you can.
Most systems do that. Like, they'll just integrate the Active Directory.
So they're ready to migrate. So then people log in and they see that. I'm just trying to be easy.
Should be pretty seamless, but I will find that information out specifically because I've done the implementation.
I just know when you change things, it's sometimes or not.
Change is never easy, yes.
Especially people that are set in their ways.
Understand.
Any further comments? Oh, Councilor President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm one of the ones that sent through the previous one. And it sounded great when they came and they made their presentation. But as the years went by, so my question to you is, can you guarantee that we're not going to fall into the same situation that we did with the other?
Yes. Our implementation, our implementation director, Bob Johnson, actually came out and met with the city and walked through why what happened with Tyler will not happen here. And we, and you know, it's his promise to make sure the city goes live successfully on time. And just as much as you guys want to be successful, we need you guys to be successful too. We want you guys to be blowing reference in the state of New Mexico. So, you know, we.
We're not going to be surprised during the process of saying, oh, by the way, we forgot you need a buy module X or whatever.
That's why we have so many meetings. We really walk through it and make sure we're not missing everything, you know, going through all the spews with Chad and Tony. And if we do miss anything, that's included in that delta and our implementation costs. We actually overestimate on that in one-time implementation cost to account for those minor changes.
A part of your problem with Tyler is that they don't have the resources available to be able to support the client base they have. They are about, we're probably 30 times larger than they are, both from a market cap standpoint, from an employee standpoint. They have about 12,000 employees. They have 164,000. So scaling to support our business is a much easier process. So as we grow, we can easily bring the people onboard. So Oracle's never had, there's never been a question about Oracle's ability to support its customers. And that's the advantage of going with the Oracle, the Microsofts and just the big players. There is an inherent advantage there, which is that they are stable, as she said. As Zoe said, we're too big to fail, relatively speaking. And no one can acquire us. It'd be too expensive. So NetSuite is in itself the number one revenue generator in Oracle, over a billion dollars annually. So that's a product that's not going anywhere. One of the big problems, I think, that agencies face is, you know, these companies get acquired or, to your point, they can't support their customer base anymore, or the product gets sunset. Those things, those two things, we're not going anywhere and the product's not going anywhere. Right there should make you feel a lot better than probably where you are right now with Tyler.
And it will update to the newest version, meaning we're not going to get that in the dominant. For every time there's a new version that rolls out, we're still stuck on the old version. We'd have to pay extra for the new version. And like we've seen with Tyler, it's cloud-based. This has AI and again, they're working the R and D and I think it's about a $4 billion project for Project Stargate, four or five billion?
Yeah, it's enormous project that'll combine AI.
The AI capabilities and won't in the foreseeable future. So everything we're seeing, and again, we've pretty well beat this for the last two years, is pointing me, in my own mind, to the right direction. But I will say this, it takes two to tango. Our staff will have to buy in to the implementation. It will require staff to work through the implementation. And I can already tell you, staff are already getting excited about this, particularly in the finance office, because it's going to make their lives easier and they see that. Particularly in your water billing office, because it's going to make their life easier and he sees that. Well, give me the example. The latest go-around with Tyler took about a month and a half to get resolved communications between the Itron system and the Tyler system. Submitted a help ticket, I think it was, I don't know, two months to get it resolved. Again, that's unacceptable.
Well, you know, my reservations are to experience and not experience the discount, not this council, but the previous council.
That's right.
That we made some bad choices, especially when people, businesses came and made presentations and they sounded great, just to find out that it wasn't as great as they made it out to be. And of course, the previous one is one of them, and the water meters.
Yes, sir.
Is another one that we made a big mistake on.
Yes, sir.
And so just being careful and being, I want to be optimistic that this is not going to happen, this go-around.
Me too. I wanted to be pessimistic at the beginning. And they've heard this story before from me several times. We cannot afford to have a failed implementation. And we will not have a failed implementation here. But they've certainly brought me around. And like I said, I've never seen a staff excited about a software implementation use this and to walk us in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilor Lee Howard.
Okay, so I just found out we're using Active Directory. If we continue to get new users and everything, will they continue to be safe in Active Directory? Are they going to your software, your proprietary?
You would add them to your Active Directory as you go and then they would obviously be integrated into the system.
Okay, so what do you mean?
You know, there's like, right. So you'd buy, if you added 20 more users, you might, whatever the necessary licenses are for those users. But your Active Directory is going to be talking to our system.
Okay, so it's not migrating our Active Directory over your new software? It's just actually using the Active Directory information? Okay.
Those are the points, yes.
Thank you.
This is what an Active Directory is. So when we add users to our Active Directory, when we add users to our Active Directory, those users automatically synchronize, their login synchronize, as Active Directory sync, basically. So, because you still have your Microsoft products on top of that. And then Tyler, Tyler's not cloud-based, right, fully cloud-based? Your version, I don't believe it is. No, it's local, it's totally. We're native cloud? Native cloud. And I think there was another thing to keep in mind is like, a lot of, like Tyler's an example, they have an application that essentially sits on top of, and I don't know that they use it, might use Amazon or whoever, but they're just, from a security standpoint, they're not behind Amazon's firewall. Like, everything's protected by Amazon. That's Amazon. They're still relying on their security. Everything in our, behind our security is all Oracle. So our application, our database layer, like, everything's behind our security. So that's a big difference. So we manage everything from the application layer all the way to the database.
Anyway, I heard someone ask that question.
Sorry.
It's, no, the Councilor, if we ever not use you, I still am going to have control over our Active Directory.
You get the data back.
Yeah, yeah. That's what, yeah, that was my question. Thank you. Not the doubt.
Any further comments? You know, I'd like to thank you all for a wonderful presentation. And, you know, we do have one other thing that happens here. And, you know, we have a lot of things that we have. And one of the things is when you're an alien and you come into our community, well, we always, we're always looking for a 20% alien discount, that we allow you to come in for an extra discount. And, you know, because we're going to be your getting things. And so we want, we want to work with you to make sure this solves. So go back and tell them, you know, as first hand, we ought to get a 20% discount.
Well, we've given you a very, very steep discount. I can assure you that. We've done very aggressive.
Yes, but we want one out of this universe discount.
Oh, I see. Was he the guy that I met on the corner in front of the restaurant that I took a picture with?
There you go. You can sit in your chair. So, Hexton Airport. Thank you all very much. We're really excited to offer this. So it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our air center update. So we have Ms. Bobby Thompson and, you know, Bud over there, he's anxious to give us a report.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So good to be in front of you again. As you may have figured out by now, the airport's been very, very busy, extremely busy since we saw you last month. So tonight, so you don't have to listen to me for long, I also am going to have presentations from Mr. Fred Telly, the chairman and CEO of the National Championship Air Races, and also from Mr. Oscar Bub Coppel from the AAC report. So if you look at the operating revenue on the board here, you'll see that we had another profitable month at the airport. And we, again, had a net profit. We continue to do the maintenance at the airport and try to catch up on some of the previously deferred maintenance to try to get the airport in greatest condition we can have it going forward. So then if we go into the strategic plan of things, that's a little difficult to read, I can see. So one of the strategic plan things for the second quarter of '25, which we're just starting to get into, was a comprehensive search to identify federal, state, and local funding sources. Just completed putting together a five-year capital plan, which we'll be discussing and submitting to the FAA in about 30 days. And it's very aggressive. It's probably one of the largest CIP plans that have been submitted by the Roswell Airport ever. Part of that has to do with the fact that we've identified a great deal of things that need to be done. One of the most important things, I think, is we need to improve our fire response equipment. So that's certainly on there quickly. We need new equipment to handle the larger aircraft that are coming in. If you're at the airport in the next few weeks, you're going to see Boeing's triple seven coming in and out. We need to be able to board the spin on fire of that size aircraft. We need to be able to respond to it. So we'll be working forward on that. We've completed a good assessment. We're looking at the FBO agreement. We've had complaints in the past, as I'm sure you folks are aware, on the FBO. We've been able to work with them to get some of those improved. We also were able to give a change in management. The management wasn't doing their job. So they changed that out. They have not selected a permanent manager yet, but we want to make sure they're continuing to improve. And if not, we will take the appropriate action because they are in the last option five-year period of their lease. You heard from that flight last month. After the meeting, I informed them you're doing a lot of development and private equity investment at other airports. We want to see that at Roswell or maybe we need to look other ways. So we also wanted to talk about the fact that we're doing quite a number of leases. You saw several on your agenda for this evening. And Michelle Sanchez, our property manager, we talked to you later in the afternoon. Also, in working with the city manager, Mr. Ray, he's had some initial meetings on the spaceport. We'll be visiting the spaceport in New Mexico later on, trying to get us designated as a spaceport as well. So we continue to do a great number of things. So with our passenger boarding, you'll see our passenger boarding, that blue column is what we're doing this year so far. And you'll see that's quite dramatic improvement over 2024. We continue to have good loads in plane lifts. We are hoping to increase our air traffic with either additional American flights or other airlines. We're working with our air service consultant to try to develop those. And one thing that we hear often that we need to improve on is if folks want to go west, they'll have to go east first. So we can hopefully add some western flights, connections perhaps to Los Angeles. We've talked with American Airlines this week about that. The reason Los Angeles instead of Phoenix, because Phoenix was moderately popular when I was here before. However, from Phoenix, you're kind of restricted where you can go from that. It's not a major hub airport. So Los Angeles, you can go anywhere in the world once you get to Los Angeles. So for the airport flight operations, you'll also see there, I was really surprised actually when I saw the March numbers, because if you remember, March was not a great weather month. There was that dust stuff, we had snow. It was quite challenging, but still the activity stayed relatively high. Although the Navy that's been there at Colhane has definitely been challenged. Aircraft parking, we're kind of holding steady with all the dry storage aircraft. We're waiting to see what the market does, what happens with airlines. Been a lot of transition with the airlines. After COVID, they sort of maintained their fleets, but now those fleets are reaching about 25 on average, which is where they tend to like to change them out. So as they purchase new aircraft, then often the other aircraft come to Roswell. Now, the triple seven is being tested and the 737 MAX is being tested by Boeing at the airport. They recognize that and that's why they're trying to get both of those aircraft up and ready to sell. So for the next flight, this one I'm particularly proud of, this is some work to get conduit over to the area where the National Championship Races are be working. The thing that I really like about this is all this work was done by our staff. We did not have to hire outside contractors. We have such a tremendous team that I get to work with every day, that I'm really pleased with the work they do and they really step up and step forward. We also are beginning of bids on the bathrooms, the bathrooms of the terminal. We will be working on the ones, if you're familiar there, the ones by the steps first. None of the bathrooms at the airport are ADA compliant. So we definitely want to improve that and just improve the general look and condition of those. The intent, according to our engineers, is to have that completed by one September. And we will be actually going to get that done. Also, give that same threat and project as a backup generator for the terminal, which does not currently exist. With the price and everything, we looked at natural gas and we also looked at diesel. The price differential was considerable, so we will be going with diesel on that. I'm also very, very happy to report that we finally started with the flood repairs in the terminal. We felt it was important to work with the waterfront museum first. They've been there all week long. As soon as the carpet arrives, then that will be completed. They painted, they fixed the drywall, and then they'll be moving throughout the rest of the terminal to get that done. So I would certainly stand for your questions. And if you don't have anything for me, we'll move on to Mr. Telling.
Any questions to Ms. Thompson? Seeing, thank you, and I would, as long as you're here, I want to thank you. I know you've been working on the back rents and the amount of money. And I want to thank you for getting an awful lot of people calling up.
Well, there's two things here, Mr. Mayor. Two things we want to work on, we'll continue to work on, which you all saw in the audit report. There were not only a number of people of people that weren't paying on time, that there were also a number of that had gone into the holdover periods on their leases, which was very convenient for them because they had way less than market rents on the older leases. So the two things we've been working on, like you said, is collecting past dues and also getting folks updated on their leases to market rents.
Thank you all.
Doing a very good job. Mr. Thompson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The esteemed members of the council. Thank you very much for allowing me to have a little bit of time this afternoon. First of all, just as a small token, on behalf of the National Championship Air Races, I hope you enjoy your morning coffee and tea and whatever in your new mug, and think of us. I have to say, we appreciate everything that you've done for us. And, Mr. Mayor, without being out of line, I have to compliment all of your staff, from Hess to Chad Matthews. The truth of the matter is, the cooperation and support we've had, and the intimate, ongoing involvement with the aviation director that you've had at the airport, it's just been fabulous. It has enabled us to move forward extraordinarily quickly. What delays we have faced, you may have heard, have been surrounding the brand standards. We did run into a small speed bump with the FAA office that had a foreword on the exact placement, positioning to be consistent with all their regulations. And I'm delighted to advise you that all of that has been addressed, and we have all the approvals necessary to proceed. We've also recently been given the approvals on each of the pylon locations. And while this may seem a bit surprising, it did to me at first, the FAA decided that it was going to issue a independent letter on each pylon being placed, all roughly 28 pylons. And at first, they thought, well, why would they do that? You know, why not approve them en masse? Well, when I was talking to Mike Matthews at Don, I mean, the obvious reason benefit to us is that should we ever have to move one, while I don't think they tried to help us, it means that we only have to get one letter of approval for that given pylon to be moved. So for whatever reason, they took this approach. They are all in place. Those approvals are with us. And final approval, it's very important, is the construction plan approval has also been received. All of these documents could not possibly have been done without the work of your city engineering department and your consultants and Bobby Thompson. So I have to thank you for all of that. Well, with that as prelude, what progress were we making? Well, and put it back, ticketing was open, first of all, to our past fans. They had a three-week window to re-up if they want their same box or reserved seats. All of that has taken place. Then it was opened to general public. So ticketing has begun with the general public as of about a week ago. And I'm delighted to say that actually, we're tracking against 2021 and 2022 frankly quite closely. As all of you know, as I've mentioned before, 2023, our final flag event arena was, by comparison, a blowout. So I'm not using that as our baseline. But 2021, 22 were two typical years. If we continue to track with that, we could be looking at as many as 85,000 people here at Roswell, net. I have learned that for years in corporate life, under promise and try to over-deliver. So the comments that I've made in terms of talking to Secretary Lansing Adams and others is honestly, because of the housing challenges, notwithstanding the great harvest from income, RV placements and everything, I anticipate, and I would be exceptionally happy if we managed to get 50,000 people at the races this year. We are getting some feedback from our traditional fans that it's very hard to find locations. Working with each of the cities in the surrounding areas, we have through our website and other material, the ability for them to go city by city and see what hotels are there, what inventory is still alive and active. And we're putting out another e-blast this week, which, again, tries to educate our traditional 40 to 50,000 active fans that have come every year for years, that where are the other locations and how can I get housing? By the same token, I'm pleased to see we're beginning to get some uptake in individuals saying, you know, with the races coming, we have to be willing to open up our housing. People have taken over the race week. I know that there were three that were listed early on. All three of those were hooked very rapidly. We hope that might encourage more people off from their homes to find another place to be for a week or so. So honestly, when we worked with the team led by the mayor, Mike Esprido, the fact of the matter is, they convinced us early on, this has to be viewed as a regional event, and we completely agree. That being said, we understand we have to convince and educate all of our fans about that. In terms of local activity, Chad, you might if I make a little comment about our plane?
Please.
Oh, please. So, one of the things that, you know, being a new Roswell citizen, I wanted to make sure that we were able to do something for Roswell citizens and businesses. So working with Chad, we're trying to work on a form of distribution in conjunction with the city by which we'll be able to offer all of them a 20% discount on ticketing, and we'll keep that window open for about a month. It'll be a week or so, maybe two, before we work it out. And if people have already bought tickets, we'll find a solution to make sure they get a rebate. But we like to make certain that everybody in Roswell gets a home time advantage, even if they come for a day. We, we hope everybody gets a chance to see why we're so excited about the races. So ticketing's going quite well. RV sales, space sales, and parking are fairly active. I was told by Tony MacIntyre just this afternoon that our Checkered Flag Club, or Premium Club, is actually on Saturday night, all but about 20 seats shy of being sold out. Now, we still have Friday night, Sunday, a few other days, but the reality is, it's an early indication that many of our dedicated fans are coming back and seriously excited about being here in Roswell. The other things I'd like to talk about, we had two big events coming up. Pilot Racing School, May 18th to 23rd, is going to bring current registrations to some place in the neighborhood of 90 aircraft pilots and crews, plus Ra-Ra volunteers and staff. So I expect the first small invasion wave to Roswell in May is going to be in the neighborhood of between 300 to 400 people for the week. We're expecting the businesses, we've already noticed the bookings in the hotel, but we're hoping all the business will see a serious influx of business. And we are really excited about the fact that everybody's going to be able to see what Bobby and I already come to experience, just how gracious and hospitable we've been here. So this will be the first, and we view it as a bit of a shakeout. It's going to be with the support from the city. We're going to have the pit area chip sealed and ready to go. We'll be using taxiway Charlie. Most of the other developmental work will be after the Pilot Racing School, but we're looking forward to having all of these people here. And it'll be a drag run for getting ready for a big event in September, September 10 through 14. The next thing I'd like to talk about is, to happen in the course of today, Secretary of Transportation Rick Serna was good enough to join us today, introduced us to the person who is going to be leading the paving of the apron and a small segment of one of the old runways that had cut out, so we have to restore it. The city has received a grant, so the lease has been signed up. I guess the money's not here yet.
It's in the works.
In the works. Five million dollars being provided by the state of New Mexico to take care of the development of the apron and a small segment of runway that's being approved. And I have to say, Chad, Mike Matthews, we're, we're part of the team there today. And the fact of the matter is, as I listen to the discussion, but they're the experts, I think that plans are in place for dealing with your appropriate level of contracting, procedural approval, and all other activities to make sure that this project can be done on time. The on time for that means late in August. So August 30th is hopefully the drop dead date. So it's in place for the final event. It does not have to be the Pilot Racing School. So with that, that covers virtually everything. I'm delighted to take any questions, but I cannot reiterate to all of you how much we are deeply appreciative of everything you've done so far to make this our new home. We're looking forward to being here well in the future. So I'd like to take any questions if there are.
Questions, Mr. Thompson?
Turk, thank you very much.
No questions?
It's a good thing I'm third on this, because my, my report may not be quite that exciting. Good evening, Mayor Jennings and Roswell City Councilors. The AAC had our April meeting on Tuesday, April 1st, and we had some tenants in attendance at the meeting. Several staff people were there. Dr. Sean Powell, who is president at NMUR, provided a handout for everyone in attendance at the meeting. They summarized a lot of the information from the university. And the reason that we're having people present at our AAC meeting is to ensure that tenants and people out of the Air Center have the opportunity to put information in front of the AAC. The total number of students enrolled at the university in 2024 was slightly under 3,300 students. I had no idea we had that many students out there. The 556 graduates that will be in May in various disciplines come from 21 counties in New Mexico, 16 states in the United States, and one foreign country. The total annual salary for the 280 faculty and staff was just under $13,520,000. That's a significant cash input into Roswell just from salaries. The capital investment in the campus since 2018, just over seven years, is $31,970,000. This is approximately $4.57 million per year. A large portion of these expenditures go back into the local community businesses. This would be a total average annual current amount of $18.1 million per year back into our community. I doubt that any of us knew there was that much money for an out-of-university back into the community. And if, if the opportunity presents itself, I would encourage each of you to thank Dr. Powell and his staff for what they've done out of the university on behalf of the city of Roswell. The ADV lining project continues on a monthly basis. This project is currently estimated to be about 75 to 80% complete. All equipment needed to complete the new vault should go out to bid by the end of this month. However, total build time to bring the new electrical vault online has been pushed out about 180 days after the end of April. This new equipment will replace two older electrical vaults, and it is anticipated that the new electrical vault will provide greater reliability to the new lining on all the Air Center runways. The airport master plan update with FAA approval is expected to be, is expected to also be complete by the end of April. The final presentation of the airport master plan is expected to be done by the end of June this year. Both the BLM loading pit and taxiway projects are now fully funded, but construction is delayed until after fire season later this fall, to not interrupt while there are moving aircraft through that area. The apron rehabilitation in front of the terminal building received a notice to proceed in late March. Construction is expected to begin this month. No problems with passengers, passenger boarding or unloading are anticipated. Maybe a little extra walking from the terminal, but no problems are anticipated. Bobby mentioned this a little bit. Taxiway Charlie rehab will hopefully go to bid by the end of this month. This project will remedy the problems caused to the asphalt paving by heavy aircraft that were parked on the taxiway during COVID. This distorted the paving and requires the top three inches of paving to be removed and then a new asphalt surface installed. However, funds for this have not been allocated. It is a continuing resolution in Congress. Hopefully, this will be ready either later this month or in May. This project is expected to be a 1.8 to 2.0 million-dollar project. Prices for reconstruction of the ground floor restrooms, which Bobby mentioned, in the terminal building, will hopefully be provided by these two contractors by April the 21st. It's out to bid, and we hope to get two bids by the 21st. Hopefully, a contractor can be selected, and the restrooms will be completed by September 1, prior to the start of the air races. The southeast waterline project will hopefully be ready to continue by the end of this month. Wiped-out construction should be finished with most of the emergency pipeline work completed that was required due to last year's floods. Don Fisher reported that the 300-person Boeing contingent that required badging for the Air Center is mostly completed with no problems of any significance. That's a lot of people here at Roswell just from Boeing to test aircraft. That will help restaurants and hotels and feed, feed into the community right at the end of the Navy week. So. It's anticipated that terminal building repairs from the flood damage were to begin this week. This is as of our meeting day. The Walker Museum will be the first to be completed, and they've been working on the Walker Museum all this week. So the walls are completed. Still have the flooring to install. It's expected to be approximately six weeks to complete all ground floor repairs in the terminal. The final project that we want to discuss is the drainage, drainage problem on East Challenger Road. That's the road that's immediately adjoining or close to the fence. It's a short distance east of the terminal. If you go east from the terminal, it's obvious to just drive around Challenger that there's a low area there. This area's had drainage problems close to the northwest corner of Building 58, which is leased by Air Sale. And this has been a problem for several years, but became very evident during the flood with quite a bit of water running through the west end of the building. A survey will be required to determine elevation issues and develop a proposed solution to better improve water flow in this area away from the building. Matt Rogers has indicated that 30 days should hopefully be adequate time to develop a solution for water movement in this area. And then, one last thing, I want to encourage the mayor to hopefully move forward during the month of May to get the AAC fully staffed up again. We've got three people that have turned out, and we need to get those people reappointed, if that's the desire of the mayor. So thank you. This concludes my report, and I stand for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Okay. Chad? For item 2021.
Yes, sir. Mayor Jennings, city council members, I'm very pleased to report to you tonight that the New Mexico Transit Association has named Roswell Transit and Ms. Becky Hicks and her staff as the transit system of the year for the state of New Mexico. Becky, could you turn around? Mayor, council members, if you'll bear with me for a second, I'd like to read this to you. It's, it kind of summarizes some of the high benchmarks that are our transit system here in Roswell. It's a achievement under Becky's leadership, of course, with the help of her staff. In 1992, the city of Roswell began operating Vegas Trails Transit out of a former breakout facility the city purchased from FTA funds. In 2019, the city of Roswell renamed the system Roswell Transit. In 2022, in response to service disruptions due to COVID-19 pandemic, Roswell Transit converted feeder routes from their scheduled fixed route service to a bus stop-to-stop demand response service to better serve the needs of their riders. Today, Roswell's transit ridership levels are at 77% of pre-COVID levels. That's an achievement. In 2024, the building redosso was severely impacted by several wildfires, which led to its temporary and total evacuation. Roswell Transit provided evacuees with free rides to locations that were set up to provide shelter and supplies later that same year. I'll just tell you, they did a fantastic job. I hit them on the fly. Hey, can we make this happen? Can we get these folks in front of caseworkers, whether it's at NEMI, at our civic center? And can we get them out to the zoo to meet with some of these folks and get some information and just enjoy a day without all worries and stress? And Becky and her team said, no problem, and made it happen. Also, in 2024, Roswell Transit provided 8,066 free trips to veterans with funding from the Chavas County Health Council and together with veterans. Due to post-COVID service innovations, their service to the community during the emergency response efforts and their commitment to serve veterans, Roswell Transit is named as the Section 5311 System of the Year, Transit System of the Year. Congratulations, we're honored.
Thank you all. I couldn't do it without the team that I have. Chris Moore, my transit manager, and Ray Mendoza, our operations supervisor, and all the drivers, they do an excellent job, and they really never say no. So when I say jump, they do. And if that weren't the case, I wouldn't be standing in front of you right now because I can't do it myself. Thank you very much.
Becky, you forgot something. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you. We got your whole team. Thank you very, very much because you help an awful lot of people get around, you know, that have a hard time. And just thank you because whether they're school kids, going or whatever, you all have always stepped up and gone out of your way, do a nice job for our community and, and help our people. Thank you all very, very much. Certainly something very well-earned. Thank you. Okay, next we have item 22. This is the out-of-state travel.
Mayor, members of the council, staff, before you, the report for the police department will be traveling out of state. And I believe Chief Bateman is here. Any questions?
Chief Bateman? Can't ask no questions down here. Sorry about you having such a bad week. But would you explain to the councilors about your out-of-state travel for your individuals and?
I didn't see it. No. Mayor, councilors, good evening. Yeah, our out-of-state travel this month, Officer Nguyen Fontnez and Officer Gonzalez went to Corpus Christi, Texas for Gracie Survival Tactics, which is ground fighting tactics for, so they can come back and be instructors to train defensive tactics for other officers. A lot of that training isn't held in New Mexico, and they had to get the recertification of it. Officers Mata and Morales. They're both actually work a lot of traffic. Officer Mata is one of our traffic officers, which we only have three of. Going to Loveland, Colorado, April 2nd through the 4th. It's a required course for traffic officers. Officer Dollar is going to Defensive Technology Academy Conference. Officer Dollar is part of our Narcotics Task Force. So it's a conference to further his education and that kind of stuff and tactics. He's also a part of our SWAT team. Officer Baruman, part of our SWAT team at SRO. He's having to go to a mandatory class for specialized firearms for the SWAT team. And the last one, I believe, is Officer Jefferson. He's going to a Leadership and Team Building Tactical Team Leaders Conference. Sergeant Jefferson is one of our supervisors on the SWAT team, and that class was the only one held out of state for that particular SWAT thing.
Any questions to Officer Bateman or how many of the travel that they have? You know, I might, I might suggest, I know, I think Flexi has some, some high-speed driving courses that might be interesting. I think they're offered free.
We've actually already done that. So about a month and a half ago, I met with border patrol supervisors, the chief out of Flexi, to design a driving course for us specifically. So they actually got with Flexi. They're two different entities, per se. Got with them and actually designed a driving course to fit Roswell Police Department, which would be pursuit driving, high-speed response driving, and normal driving. It's a four-day course. I believe it was, it is a charge at Flexi, but minimal. So we're actually doing, I believe, four classes throughout the end of the year. We'll have all our personnel actually go through that, and they'll actually get a certificate for training, for their biennial training. But after we've had a few car crashes, we decided to think outside the box. Because a lot of our officers, after the academy, there's no driving courses really in New Mexico other than at the LEA Academy in Santa Fe, and those are for, you know, for recruits. So Flexi was generous enough to design this course for us, and we, I believe, just sent, we just sent people this week. I believe the class is going on, and we have 10 to 12 people in it.
Okay, well, any other further questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, for giving these questions. Okay. Next, we have item five on the agenda. I've laid the flags in front of item 33. Okay, item five is for the, authorized approval for Air Sale for a 10-year lease agreement beginning in April 1st of 2025, ending March 31st of 2035 for Hangar 85 and Building 240 at the air center. Councilman Hillibrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's my page here. We have. Police agreement. Okay. I don't know why you're just there. This is? Yeah, 45.
While we're waiting. Okay, we had two, well, we'll pass these down. We had two individuals who would like to speak on public participation. They, they did not have any, I agree, any subject matter they wanted to talk on. So if you could hold on just a second. Or we had Nicholas Rubio. Is he still here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and tell us what you would like to address the council on?
Mr. Mayor, we're actually on item five.
Well, I know, I was just doing it while he was getting ready.
I apologize, thank you.
I mean, I don't, I understand we were on five, but I was just trying to.
Expedite.
Expedite things. Would you like to go back to item five, Madam? We have a gentleman, Mr. Rubio. Would you please let us know what you're here for, for public participation? We only had two on this screen, and so.
Good afternoon. My name is. Nicholas Rubio. My name is Nicholas Rubio. I'm the Local 51 Utility Worker Union of America President. Today, I come to you guys to raise awareness of some of the challenges that we face as city workers. One of the challenges is safety. Education and training are key components for safe workday practices. And while some efforts have been made in recent months to promote safety, we remain far away from our goal of ensuring that our employees are prepared to face any challenge that the workday may have in store. This comes to, we have been getting safety from, like, animal control, but there is a video online does not prepare somebody to go handle a 90-pound aggressive animal. And so these things, we think need to be addressed. Another one is fairness. Fairness in the workplace includes treating all employees with respect, ensuring equal opportunities, and acknowledging the unique contributions that each of our employees make. Establishing fairness in the workplace builds trust, loyalty, and commitment towards our organization here in the city. Achieving fairness is going to require a conscious effort to actively address the inequalities that persist in our workplaces here today. And the item I'd like to talk about today is compensation. Our employees, our employees argue that this is the most important issue that we face today. The lack of compensation to the value of our employees is huge. We all face economic tragedies, you know. We had the flood happen. We had, we were affected firsthand. For the past two years, we've missed out on our death increases. And we understand, you know, there's other things that happen that we have to account for whenever we're building our budget. But, you know, we, it would be, it would really be nice to not be left out again coming up this next budget year. The union believes that with the city's help, we can address these issues, and we can boost morale and productivity within the city. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you very much. And your address, you have to give your address.
Like my home address?
Yeah, your home address.
618 East Apple Street.
618 East Apple. I would just tell you, we're very well aware of this, and we had some issues that happened just in compensation when any county goes to firemen and they give 10% increases or whatever to their firemen, or the state mandates 15% increase for our policemen. A lot of times, that comes back and affects what we have to do to compensate. And, and we have talked about this, about how unfair it treats our other workers in the city. And we're going to do what we can to address that in the coming session.
Is there?
So just so you know that, okay? Just up front. Any further comments? Okay, next we have Charles Thompson. Thompson.
Hello, hello. My name is Charles Thompson, Charles C. Thompson, chief for everybody. I live at 308 East Onyx. I work for the cemetery. I haven't been here in a while. And I was hoping this new council members will some of you had a different idea of what was going on because I believe that we all work for the city. We all serve this city. I know, I do. I come here every day, I go to work, and I do my best. As you heard Ms. Thompson talk, her employees step up no matter what we, what we're fighting for or what we're doing. Our disagreements, but we don't lack on doing our jobs. We give our 110%. That comes from every man and woman that works for the city of Roswell. We only expect the same from you guys. We're not asking any more, any less of you guys than what we put in. As you've heard Ms. Hicks talk about her people. Yo, that's nice to be lifted up that way. And I'm glad they are lifting their people up that way. And I think a lot of these employers are, are, the bosses around the city of Roswell should be doing the same. But we don't get that. But nonetheless, we do our jobs. And all we're asking for is to be treated fairly across the board. We're always getting to the bottom of the barrel and saying that there ain't this, there ain't that. But I know we can do better than that. You know, I don't want, I, you talk about transparency, and it's hard to see it when somebody just shuts you down with, I don't remember saying that, I don't remember that. It's easy to say that and feel good about it. But that's how you feel. But I don't take it that way. When I give somebody my word, I hold up to it because it's all I got. And I believe that every one of you took it up to do the same thing as you sit up there today to serve your people. You went out there and campaigned and said, I will serve my people. And all I'm doing is asking you to hold up to that. Is you expect me to go to work every day and do the best that I can? Sometimes, in income and weather, I'm out there doing things I shouldn't be doing, but I do them. Why? For the safety of my public. Because I care. So happy.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And certainly your crew, your crew at the cemetery certainly does a fine job. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go back, can we go back to item five? Does that be okay? We go back to item five. Councilman Hillibrand, item five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we approved the authorized air sale for a 10-year lease agreement beginning April 1, 2025, and ending March 31st, 2035 for Hangar 85 and Building 240 at the Roswell Air Center. What was originally in your packet was the wrong lease. So this is the new lease. That's the appropriate lease.
Okay, so. Second. I have a motion, a second vice, by Councilman Cavan. Are there any questions? Everybody has the appropriate lease. Okay, one was handed out. Okay, yes. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're requesting the approval to authorize air sale for a 10-year lease agreement beginning April 1, 2025, and ending March 31st of 2035 for Hangar 85 and Building 240 at the Roswell Air Center. You're free to pay the annual sum of $303,771 for Hangar 85 and an annual sum of $59,335 a piece for Building 240. Two leases were included in your packet. One was incorrectly uploaded for Building 240, which you have in front of you. Legal committee committed, recommended approving order zero on their meeting on 3/27. And I apologize for the wrong upload. And I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions on, on this, improving this lease? For Building 35. Any questions? Okay. Saying, uh, voiceover, all those in favor of saying a five by saying aye?
Aye.
A vote? I vote a nine, if I'm even of the negative, uh, the lease has been approved. Okay, now, I think maybe we can go back to item twenty-three. That would be our next one. And we have that, and we have, um, three individuals who've signed up to speak for that. Uh, this is application for case number, um, vacation number twenty-five dash zero zero seven. Request for vacation of East Ninth Street from sixty C to, uh, wide public right-of-way from North Main Street to Virginia Avenue. Okay, Council Lady, uh, Halverson.
Mister Mayor, I vote in favor of public hearing for the application for case VAC twenty-five zero zero seven. Request vacation of East Ninth Street, sixty feet wide, public right-of-way from North Main Street to North Virginia Avenue, and vacate adjacent North and South alleys from Eighth Street to South of Tenth Street from public rights of Roy, and convert to twenty-five-foot public utility and reciprocal access easements for infill development in the C-two community, commercial, and I-one light industrial zoning deed.
Here we are, motion by Council Lady Halverson, is there a second?
Second.
Hi, Council Cortez. Okay, Mayor.
We're gonna swear the name. Everybody.
Oh, we are. Anybody who wants to speak or talk before this on item twenty-three, you're gonna have to stand up so we can swear you in, and you have to raise your hand and state your name. And, uh, any, so any, anybody who's signed up for public comment, they have to do that on this banner. And, uh.
Okay, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty or perjury?
There's Mister Hicks and Mister, I'm, uh, sorry, Mister Hicks and Mister Gross. Okay. Okay. Mister Crumman, are you gonna speak? I mean, I didn't know you didn't stand up to swear, and I guess you're gonna swear too.
I'm gonna observe.
Your honor, just gonna observe, okay. I don't know about being honored, but that's all right.
He'll take it.
All right. Okay, Mayor.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of the council. This is a case, zoning case, that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission already, and the final decision rests with you regarding a vacation of Ninth Street, East Ninth Street, between Main, Main and Virginia Avenue. On April first, twenty twenty-five, the City of Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to one to vacate the East Ninth Street right-of-way between Main Street and Virginia Avenue to vacate an adjacent section of the alley right-of-way north of the East Ninth Street ending south of Tenth Street, vacate an adjacent right-of, alley right-of-way from East Ninth Street south to East Eighth Street, and convert rights-of-way to utility and access easements. This is the zoning map that shows the properties under consideration that are contiguous to the Ninth Street and Alley rights-of-way to be, uh, under consideration for vacation. And as you can see, they're zoned C-two community, commercial, and I-one light industrial, and they're in commercial and industrial corridors. This is a conceptual rendering for infill development for a service lane on East Ninth Street rendered by Smith Engineering Company. These are staff photos, this, these slides are looking from Main Street toward East Ninth Street, and Roswell Ford properties on the north and south of, uh, north and south of East Ninth Street on Main Street. And this slide is looking west along Ninth Street and looking north from Ninth Street. These slides are looking south down the alley from Ninth Street toward Eighth Street, and then the last slide, I mean, the last picture there is looking from Eighth Street up that alley toward Ninth Street. This is the excerpt of the preliminary, preliminary East Ninth Street right-of-way vacation replat by Smith Engineering. The full plat is in exhibit F of your packet. The Roswell subdivision code specifies that vacation plats of procedure is the application shall, the applicant shall include a plat declaring what is to be vacated. Such a plat shall be processed and considered in the like manner as that of plats for minor subdivisions. And those minor subdivision plats go through Planning and Zoning Commission. That commission makes a recommendation to the city council. The city council will release a final decision. This is a graphic map by Smith Engineering showing the East, uh, Ninth Street right-of-way vacation. In the, the Ninth Street is in yellow and the alleys are in blue. Back in nineteen eighty-one, there was a vacation of dedication of block seven and eight, block seven, North Spring River Edition on the same Ninth Street. So a little bit of the Ninth Street right-of-way was already vacated back in nineteen eighty-one, case eighty-one dash zero zero seven. This is the next one from the Conference of Master Plan, the future or the preferred land use scenario map. Showing, the star shows the area of, under consideration, and next to a conceptual metropolitan redevelopment area in the black hash mark, that would be the River District. And in, um, twenty twenty, city council revised the boundaries of the River District Metropolitan Redevelopment Area, and the property, the properties under consideration are in the blue circle, and they are in a section of this district. This area is also part of it, north of Ninth Street and just a little section of Ninth Street at the intersection of Main are in the AH flood zone. These are letters from the utility companies, from Solid Waste, and from the Fire Marshal. These are in your packet under exhibits H and J. These are the sanitary sewer maps and the water map showing the sanitary sewer going down the alley. And that alley to be under consideration for vacation will be converted to a utility easement. Nothing will be built across the alley right-of-ways. It will still remain as access and utility easements. And then the water map, there is no water on Ninth Street, just on Main and Virginia. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protest letters, zero verbal protests, and one in inquiry for zoning case VAC dash twenty-five dash zero 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 seven. And then there's some legal standards from the New Mexico State statutes regarding vacations, abandonments, river, public roads, streets and highways. The property or property rights acquired by purchase or condemnation by the state or any commission, department, bureau, agency, or political subdivision, state or public road, street, or highway purposes shall not revert until such property or property rights are vacated or abandoned by formal written declaration of vacation or abandonment which has been duly declared by the state or any commission, department, institution, bureau, agency, or political subdivision of the state in whom the property or property right has vested. Okay. And then also, section sixty-seven dash two dash seven, any owner of lands above the any highway, street, or road, his heirs or assigns may petition the state or any commission, department, bureau, agency, or political subdivision thereof who believes a section of any road or public road, street, or right-of-ways not or no longer needed for public purposes, and may petition the state or any commission, department, bureau, agency, or political subdivision thereof for a formal determination of abandonment or vacation. And I might add that, that earlier vacation of Ninth Street was also for an auto, like auto dealership as well, so it's, it's been in that use for a really long time. These are the legal standards that the city has adopted, amending chapter two of the municipal code. This is in exhibit okay of your packet. So this is real property transactions, article seven. Section two dash two zero one, no existing municipal purpose. Prior to the sale, exchange, or donation of real property belonging to the city, central property shall be determined to be not essential for any municipal purpose. The mayor and city manager for his designated shall make this determination writing and communicate the determination to the governing body as appropriate under this article. And then, uh, section two point two zero two talks about appraisal. And I stand for questions, um.
Okay, questions from members, and, well, we might have testimony first. So it'd be good, uh, Mister Gross, I believe, would you like to come forward and testify? Don't you have to say?
I'll go first, Mr. Mayor.
Or who else, is that fine, if you want? Mister Hicks wants to go first, that's fine, whatever.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, my name is Scott Hicks, I'm with Smith Engineering. Uh, four oh one North Penn is the address of the office. Yeah, we're, uh, the agent acting on behalf of the owners of Roswell Ford, who are here in the audience tonight. Uh, we assisted them with preparation of the application into the exhibits that you saw that Mayor has discussed earlier, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we're here to, uh, present this case and hope that you will consider the, uh, approval of the recommendation of the PNC commission that we got last week uh, for the vacating of Ninth Street between Main and Virginia, and then converting the alleys adjacent to, uh, those properties, uh, along there as, uh, easements rather than alleys. So a little history of how we got here in line and why now. Uh, and you may hear more about this later, I'm going into too much detail, but uh, last year and prior to that, there was plans being made and designs underway for a new Ford dealership on West Second Street. And, um, in October, we had the flood. And it went through that corridor at Spring River, where, uh, Ford is now, and about five feet deep, and it inundated, as you all know, all the properties down there. And so that pretty much stopped any, uh, work at Roswell Ford. They lost all their inventory, all the vehicles, parts, and a lot of damage to the buildings over there. So, uh, they got with Ford, and being that it was much quicker to renovate and repair where they were than to, uh, go and get it shut or go to shut the new facility out on the second. They chose, uh, to stay right where they're at, and made the determination to rebuild right there where they're, where we're currently at. So Toby and his crews got to work, and within a couple of months, they had that showroom and, and parts department back in business. And that, that was a miracle in itself, as much as damage was done. So that also presented opportunity for, uh, newer and more modern facilities across the street, and Ford is behind that, this is part of that. It gave us the opportunity also to look at Ninth Street and congestion that's been in that corridor forever with, with customers and vehicles going through there, uh, on a daily basis, and, and by, by vacating the right-of-ways, and things could be done to make more efficient customer service through there, safer corridor for, for the public, and, uh, and also some, uh, advantage to the city, that we'll get into, for no longer having that, that right-of-way for their maintenance. So we met with engineering, we met with Mister Cornack and Mister Neymar, and we went over our idea here and got positive feedback initially. Uh, so we went next to the neighbor, Mister Rhodes, owns the southeast parcel there, and we had a couple of meetings with him, because he was gonna be, uh, affected, of course, with this. And he, he's on board, he actually signed the application. Uh, so he was good with this. And then I went to the utility companies, because there are, there are utilities around the alley other than sewer, city sewer, there is gas, there is power, and there is communication there, so I talked to all those utility companies and explained what we would be doing, and they were in no opposition of it whatsoever. And they sent emails, and Meredith included in the packet. I also talked to Solid Waste, Abraham out of Solid Waste, and he had no opposition, he can still get in to serve, uh, the facility for solid waste pickup. So there were several people that we talked to, um, before we ever submitted the application to PNC. Uh, so we got to, uh, PNC, we presented the case last week. Um, a little bit of a surprise came up at the last minute. Uh, this, this twenty-four oh three, I think we've, we've worked through that, I'll hear more about that later, but, uh, up until then, in my previous cases of rights-of-way, uh, no compensation was, was being, uh, asked for by the city, uh, either alley or rights-of-way. So that's how we approached this initially. And then, when that came up, it came up the day before the, the, the meeting, it came up on Monday, the meeting was Tuesday night. So it was a bit of a surprise, but, uh, we, we talked about it, we got our, our recommendation by the commission, and then, uh, I think we've had subsequent consequences, or, uh, conversations with staff, and I think we've got to work around there if that becomes an issue. So, uh, we've got, we've got the plat repaired, preliminary plat, there will be an easement in Ninth Street running from Main to Virginia to allow, uh, emergency access all the way through there, as well as the the customers that come through, and Mister Rhodes, if he needs to get to his property on, on Ninth Street, but you know, he usually uses Virginia, they've got big access on Virginia for that yard. So we've covered that, basically talked to the Fire Marshal, he had a concern about the height of the canopy that we're gonna have across there. Uh, we assured him that we would make it high enough for his trucks. Uh, he was good with that. He had a couple of other items that would be, would be addressed during development. Uh, so we've got that taken care of. So, uh, at the meeting also, we had a letter by Mister Neymar, and he pointed out several, uh, items in support of that, you can read those, or you can, if you want to hear those. Uh, right off the bat, there's a savings of forty thousand dollars in not repaving that street. There is a, a mill and fill program going on in the area, and by not milling and repaving that street alone, it saves the city about forty thousand dollars. Uh, so that's a savings right off the bat for, for the city. That money can be spent on another street somewhere else. Once this is vacated, then, uh, Roswell Ford will take it, uh, over the maintenance of that paving and that. Uh, so it's a win-win for everybody, uh, we feel. It's a win for the public, because it's a much safer corridor now, with a one-way, uh, circulation through there. It's a win for the city for no more perpetual maintenance for the street. And it's a win for Roswell Ford to get their customer. for Roswell Ford to get their customers in and out more efficiently. So I think we've covered all the bases. I even talked to DOT, as you know, Main Street's a DOT jurisdiction, I talked to the district engineer Francisco out there, and he emailed me in support of this as well because it now eliminates these uptown turning movement coming out of Ninth Street onto Main, and that's a conflict always per unprotected attention. So I think we've covered all the bases, I think we're excited about this, there's great things to come with Ford, Toby talked more about that, with that I'll stop for. Any questions?
You want to have questions, Mr. Hicks? Counsel Lady Albersen.
Thank you for the information.
Sure.
So are you looking at keeping this road open to the public, but only going eastbound?
It will remain open for Ford customers and it will go eastbound.
So not to the left? Because on page two hundred and five of our packet, there's Section six two seven, it says that if, who believes that section of public road, street, or highway is no longer needed for public purposes? Has anyone, any kind of street count, how many vehicles actually use that road?
We will do that when we go to a permit process with the DOT.
So that's just jumping ahead, isn't this jumping ahead? Without that count, I can't really make a very good decision without having that.
Yeah, and that didn't come up when we had our conversations with engineering before you. We would have done that maybe if we had, it didn't. We're not really changing the use for that corridor, and it's ninety percent used by customers of Ford anyway.
Okay, but I know I use the road, and I don't know, that's what I'm saying, without a count, I don't know how to.
Well, there's Eighth Street and Tenth Street, you know, up and down there.
Oh, I understand.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hicks, you just said there's Eighth Street and Tenth Street. What if somebody wants to vacate Eighth Street and somebody wants to vacate Tenth Street?
They'd have to come before.
Well, we're going to do the traffic flow, that's what I'm concerned.
Sure.
As listening to Counsel Halbersen, who deemed that it's no longer needed for public purposes?
That's by the city.
Pardon?
That's by the city.
And it hasn't been done yet. That would be, that's my question. What creates no longer needed for public purpose?
Well, I think that that was a review by the city engineer, and in his letter.
But he has already approved this. Did you not, Mr. Neymar? You've already given us a thumbs up approval without doing what Mr. Hicks says needs to be done.
No, I don't think it needs to be done for that corridor. It'll be done for the permit process for the.
I'm a fact-driven person, and I don't see any facts from Mr. Neymar.
Counselor, I gave testimony presenting my facts at P and Z.
Right.
And they're not in your packet.
Well, it should have been, maybe.
I'm not going to say against that. As far as the counts, I went back and looked at the, I've been, I know, I've been up this street, I think if we were to do a traffic count, you would take the number of traffic, divide by two, because most of that traffic is customers dropping off your vehicle, picking up your vehicle, and I'm sure there's a few like Counsel Halbersen. But if you look at the, again, in my letter, I went from two thousand three eight thirteen, I think twenty-one, as you look at the Google pictures, that Ninth Street has been used forever, basically serving the Ford place. When this came up as city engineer, street department, yeah, let me get this one off my inventory. And the other thing is too, based on that city floodplain manager, there's been a lot of damage over there. And the business, the structure across the street, I don't see it coming back real quick. And having a modern, whether it's Ford or whoever, having a modern business there. And if you look at the downtown area, those blocks are very short. So I know they're using, and that's that they're already using Ninth Street, but by now using from Eighth Street to Tenth Street, it's a bigger property, yes, by sixty feet. If you paid attention over the years, where the car wash used to be, that was a property line. Where the service building is, that's a property line on the property line. If you remember over there, all the cars are parking in between, we had a twenty-six foot lane or two lanes for the traffic. So as I look at it, it was already being used, and the distance between Eighth Street and Tenth Street in comparison to modern streets is very short. I gave an example, a testimony was, look at the alley behind Buffalo Wild Wings, it was vacated. The reason it was vacated because we turned that one in to access. When Buffalo Wild Wings and whatever fast food place was there, they wanted accesses off of Main Street. Said, no, I didn't want McDonald's and two other businesses playing chicken in the center lane, trying to access it. So I said, no, no access, DOT agreed with me. We vacated the alley and they paved the alley between Buffalo Wild Wings, that other business, and the hotel, they all paved the alley. And basically, it's an alley, people think it's an alley, but on paper, it's been vacated, it's an easement for those businesses to get in and out and minimize the traffic there. Across the street, we have what we call the overflow parking lot for the convention center. We vacated Tenth Street there so we could make that property, which is city property, better for the purpose that it was going to be used for.
I don't deny anything in what you're saying here. What I'm saying or asking of you, where is the fact that we can look at that says it's no longer needed? All I'm hearing is verbiage.
Okay, so.
I don't have any fact in front of me to say that it's no longer needed.
My letter was presented in testimony, supported two things, no, no, it's two things. So it supported two things, the planning and zoning process that we have.
Right.
And it supported ordinance twenty-four oh three, that right now it's easement right away, once the vacation process is done, it now becomes real property. And then I also supported that, that based on all the stuff that I had and all the factors, that my determination, my recommendation, that it became non-essential because we had Eighth Street and Tenth Street. So all that was my testimony, supporting P and Z, supporting ordinance twenty-four oh three, which didn't make your packet.
Maybe it should have been in our packet so that we were aware of that. And I understand, you know, I take my vehicle over there and I get it serviced over there, and I understand the ins and outs of that traffic flow over there. I'm not saying, all I'm saying is, give us some proof, Mr. Neymar, you know, all I'm hearing is verbal proof.
I have a, I have a, I had a letter with pictures, trying to document and other steps. If you look in the packet.
That's not before this council today.
I didn't prepare the packet, this is not my responsibility to prepare the packet for this item.
I bought a copy of the letter, if you want us to read it.
Well, that's, we're here trying to make a decision based on fact, and we don't have a lot of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It makes it dang difficult.
This is a quasi, this is a quasi-intuitive process.
That's right.
That letter should have been in front of me.
And it's not.
So was it omitted purposely or accidentally?
I don't make the packets, Mr. Neymar.
Okay, neither do I.
But you see the packets when they come out.
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to jump in, I think the engineer is speaking out of turn. Let me define some legal points here. So the city engineer by staff, or by ordinance, has certain authorities. In particular, he has engineering control over streets, roads, and alleys. However, ordinance provides that it's the mayor and manager together who make a determination about whether or not there's public need that is communicated. So Mr. Neymar presenting evidence on behalf of the city is simply not something that he is by ordinance empowered to do without going through the mayor and manager. The second portion is that real property is land or anything attached to it, erected on, including anything that may be served with or without injury to the land, can also be corporeal or incorporeal, which would be easements. So Mr. Neymar again stepping out of his lane by saying that real easement or right-of-way is not real property, it absolutely is. And then finally, the point is that we have to follow our ordinances, if we're too affectionate with this correctly, or it's subject to challenge. In this circumstance, without a determination from the mayor and the manager concurrently, there's still a public use under city law. Similarly, unless there's compensation presented to the city, you run into an anti-donation violation because real property carries within a value, and this easement has a value and the city should be compensated under ordinance and state constitutional law.
And Hess is wrong in a couple of things, I made recommendations. And again, without you seeing your letter, my letter, it's recommendations. And my letter also stated that it was right-of-way and it became real property, again, support of twenty-four oh three. I supported both the planning of zoning and twenty-four oh three, but if you don't get to see the letter, then.
Well, it just feels not full testimony, not full facts are given to us.
Counselor? The final, let me speak to that, Mr. Neymar is throwing his hand up. Mr. Neymar does not present the facts at a hearing, it is an applicant's burden. Mr. Neymar should not be the one asking for it to be presented on behalf of an applicant that would be potentially seen as endorsing an application, which city staff does not do. Without a mayor and manager.
Thank you, Counsel Lady Albersen.
Well, let me just, now I'm confused, Mr. Neymar.
I don't know what to say. You know, I made my recommendations, like I've done for lots of other stuff.
Yeah.
And apparently, there's a, the letter's not supposed to be seen or.
As I said, bring us all back, you gave that testimony and now we're not seeing that testimony.
And I don't see anybody volunteering for you guys to see the letter, so I don't know what to say.
Quite frankly, you wrote the letter, so if you can't communicate the letter.
I haven't communicated the letter, I have a copy with me, I can run down it?
Yeah, that's what.
Sure. So, okay, so describe the process of the engineering, P and Z, I mean, appealing process, and then switch back. Okay, engineering department had reviewed the case and recommends vacation of Ninth Street and alley easement as requested by applicant, recommends. Existing nineteenth is centered in operations of Roswell Ford, right-of-way width extends from face of building to face of building, see enclosed aerial photos from Chavas County parcel map. So you had the parcel map, there's arrows pointing, as I described, for the, what was it, the car wash and the service building, and then of course, the cars parked in the right-of-way. Vacating Ninth Street would remove Ninth from the responsibility of maintenance from the streets department, such pothole, curb repair, brick paper repair, and other Ninth Street was not put in the mill fill, this was on for the post twenty-four flood. Based on the recently completed mill and fill streets in the flood area, calculating present worth from the ITV dash twenty-five dash zero zero one fiscal year twenty-five mill and fill, the square yard cost is twenty-nine twenty-five for square yarding, okay? The pavement area is approximately thirteen, one thousand three hundred and twenty-six square yards. The savings not to mill and fill was thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars fifty-five cents. Number four, similarly, the alley is a paved alley. Removing the alley from, off the inventory for pavement maintenance and pothole patrol would be a savings to the city. Vacation process reverts the area back to real property, which is then taxable revenue for the city income. Again, after the process, and again, it's real property. I'm not discounting that there's no compensation for it, it's that I agree with twenty-four oh three, okay? From a future planning perspective, eastbound Ninth Street dead ends at Virginia. It serves no other properties to continue eastwardly in a direct route travel. You know, AWC no longer using that, and behind that is a railroad track, so from a planning point of view, Ninth Street will never go any further than Virginia. This portion of Roswell has a history of homeless persons, vacation of an alley, and fencing an alley would force all pedestrians to use Virginia or Main Street and keep them out of the alley, especially with the little shell station there. This is a safer alternative for travel and police enforcement. The case packet on page paragraph seven, page thirty-six of seventy-five, it finds other requirements. So that was, that reference was to the P and Z packet, but basically what I told them, if we have to relocate the fire hydrant, if we have to move a street light, if we have to remove, do all that, that's at their cost. Plus, I want dead end, M E T C D dead end sign on the alleys, Eighth Street and Tenth Street. If we remove pavers, I want all the pavers taken to the street department because we can use those pavers to repair other parts in the future. And there was some other stuff that I requested that developers do if it passes and it's vacated, that we collect basically all our city apparatus and we put them back in our department so we can reuse them, okay? The vacation on Ninth Street and creation of alley easement also assists with the infill and economic prosperity for the city of Roswell and of course, Roswell Ford. Recent two thousand twenty-four flood event has also impacted the immediate neighborhood with a severe damage to Roswell Convention Center and Goddard Museum. Additional improvement to Roswell Ford would be a welcome site to the neighborhood. In closing, engineering recommends vacation of Ninth Street and creation of an alley easement as requested by P and Z case twenty-five dash zero 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 seven, which every P and Z case, engineers always ask, what do you think recommends this kind of stuff? So what I'm doing is what I'm supposed to be doing, recommending or pulling stuff, saying, no, I don't agree with that. Again, I'm making recommendations, I'm not making determinations, that's the governing body. Current Street, Ninth Street use is not an essential needed street, nor needed for a municipal person. Vacation of Ninth Street, creation of alley easement will ease the financial burden and the liability of the municipal municipality of Roswell, New Mexico. Sincerely, Gustaf P. And then I have pictures, November two thousand twenty-one, March two thousand eight. Yeah, eight thirteen twenty-one, going back on Google, you lived on Ninth Street, ordinance. Plus, I don't have to deal with Ninth Street.
Well, that would, I think would have been beneficial had that been in our packet to see what you were discussing and talking about there.
And again, I made that testimony like I do every month at P and Z, there's questions on the next case. I'll be glad to answer questions, that's my job.
Thank you, Mr. Neymar.
Yes, sir.
For giving us some clarity, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Counsel Lady Albersen and Cortez and then Arnold.
So I understand why you want to do this, it makes complete sense, especially being the owner of Roswell Ford. Question I have is, you guys keep mentioning twenty-four oh three, I can't find it in my packet.
Yeah, I might also add that that twenty-four oh three wasn't part of the P and Z packet either when it was up, it wasn't included. We didn't learn about it until one day before the case. So maybe we could have addressed some of those issues, but we've passed, I think we've got some discussions that have taken place, so I figured we'd still work that out.
So I know we just went through an audit, we got beaten for a while, and that was my concern when you mentioned, is this an anti-donation? Because I know you mentioned we did the Tenth Street where the parking audit is, but the city owns that parking. Are we allowed to just give this huge street, well, it's not huge, but the street to a private entity, would that be an anti-donation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Albersen, my opinion is no, if something has tangible value to the city.
If something has tangible value to the city, which the right-of-way does, you have to, we, we wrote this ordinance partly presupposing what the odd findings would be because the city hasn't passed, given property away. So what this did is simply say, we made determination that the city doesn't need it, so we're not giving away something that's useful to us. The council, through the ordinance, gave that determination to the mayor and to the manager concurrently, so that one person couldn't just say it. And then the second part was that we'd have an appraisal so that we'd know what to charge for the property that's being conveyed.
Good, that's my concern is, I don't know if we're giving all the information. And I'm wondering if we should vote to table this, but I'm not going to do it right now because I know there's other people who want to speak to it. I'm wondering, we should hold it till next month so we can actually review all the information?
And Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, the, so the way the ordinance is written, it provides that this has to be heard by the council today unless the applicant seeks a continuance.
And we have Councilor Cortez.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, probably for a couple of different people. This ordinance, I guess, pass me this, it's good for you, this ordinance twenty-four oh It seems like it puts another process in front of the vacation process. And so I'm kind of curious how we get to the point where we're having, we're following a vacation process which is set out in our zoning ordinance and also in Mexico subdivision law and subdivision acts. And we are not preemptively, through our city process, making this determination prior to proceeding, because it would seem like you couldn't vacate, if I'm reading this right and thinking about the sequencing, and you can tell if I'm wrong, where we are saying before you can even contemplate a disposal of real property through a vacation, which we're saying a vacation is a disposal of real property. How, how could we initiate a vacation process without doing this first?
That's right. And that's why I, I was not included in the initial application process. And I'm sympathetic, when there's a new law, I mean, engineering firms, not exactly who would need to know about how real property conveyance is working, this is a corporation in southeastern New Mexico. But they were told ahead of time, they were requested to, or they were asked that they wanted to continue the hearing to talk with the manager and the mayor. They declined that, unless I'm incorrect.
No, we talked with them after the...
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
And so that's the, yeah, so the way it's, the, it's labor in time and there's a separate, then there's a, the section two of the ordinance itself says, any parts that are in conflict are repealed. So in so much as the zoning code is in conflict with the ordinance, the ordinance takes precedence.
Okay, so the ordinance repeals the zoning ordinance?
Well, in so much as it conflicts. So there's a case in state law on point, it's New Mexico, Inrayo Ladrage versus UU Bar Ranch. And what the court says is there, you read them in harmony. And ultimately, when the council's making its decision, it should have all of the check mark. However you get there, everything needs to be checked before the final conveyance is made.
I got you. Next question, thank you. That was very helpful. How, my next question, I mean, we'll, we'll agree that this is real property because it's land and there's a real property interest with an easement. How did the city come to, does the city own the road, the right-of-way dedicated in the spring over addition? Do they own it in fee some way?
So that is typically something the applicant would produce. I've looked into it and haven't actually been able to make a determination, partly because it's unclear, we, I haven't been able to find the applicable law for when the conveyance was made, what, nineteen ninety-one?
It was eighteen ninety-one. Eighteen ninety-one. I have a copy of the plaque.
Yeah, so in current New Mexico law, if it says for public use, as you're aware, then it becomes fee and anything else is some form of right-of-way. In a subdivision.
In a subdivision, so...
And so this was a subdivision.
And the conveyance is the dedication on the subdivision?
Right. And so I am not, I can't, unfortunately, I've looked and I haven't found yet what the answer is to an eighteen ninety-one conveyance on subdivision or plat and what effect that would have.
Would it be based off the dedication because we would have been a territory at the time?
Yeah.
Okay. Because my understanding is that when we vacate right-aways that are dedicated in subdivisions, that of course, the adjacent property owners have real interest. It would seem hard for me to believe that the city would own that in fee, because logically, then they can sell that strip to another party.
That's true. But I, I can't say at this point that I know absolutely that the city owns it. It does, the, the, the legal presumption is that we own it as a right-of-way easement. It's possible we do own it in fee and I haven't been able to figure that out a thousand percent.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just know, for example, the DOT, for example, and when you condemn a property or you purchase a property, there is an exchange and there is a conveyance instrument, which would be a deed, right? And so I'm curious as to disposition, because we're talking about disposing real property, purchase or condemn, and I'm, I'm wondering how that intersects in this situation. And just for, how we would look at this.
Yeah, the way, I mean, if you look at the Madrid versus UU Bar, that the court kind of takes for granted that a highway regardless of how it was acquired, in this case, it probably was in the public right-of-way, is just real property for the purpose of the state code when it comes to conveying your civil property.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hicks, thanks for coming tonight. How do we, how do we know, you're, you're still, there's basically still going to be a road there, right? Going a one-way road from Main Street to Virginia. How, I mean, I'm assuming that people that are not going to Roswell Ford are going to occasionally turn onto said road. That how we, you know, I mean, are we just assuming that, oh, since it's still left as a road, how would you characterize that situation?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be signage as such, but yes, there'll be people that turn in there, but they will have that south twenty feet to go all the way through. So to answer your question, Councilor Howardson, yes, it will remain open. And the public will be using it because they will be going to Ford. And they can go through all the way. And that will remain open all the time. We have to maintain that twenty-foot easement, access easement open all the way from Main to Virginia. And that will satisfy both emergency services and roads or whoever later provides that property. See, what, what's going to happen here is if this goes through, there's sixty feet left of that right-of-way and properties on the north and south adjoining get their, their portion of that. And that becomes real property that will now be taxed for those owners. But we have had discussions, just some more information, we have had discussions with the city manager and the mayor. We would have had those conversations and discussions earlier had we known that this ordinance was going to be applied. It was a, it was a little piece of the bigger ordinance amending chapter two of city code. It's just a little paragraph in there. So I was unaware of it. We were all unaware of it until Monday before that meeting. It didn't leave us time to get with them. So we've done that subsequently. And we would like to offer that, hey, we're not going to want this thing to get hung up over a little bit of compensation or appraisal, that kind of thing. So maybe there's a opportunity or a conditional approval motion kind of thing, that we do that.
Yes.
Maybe certainly we'll do that.
There's, there's two parts that are missing. So one is the actual determination that's communicated by the mayor-manager, and then the second is the appraisal. So, yeah, I mean, conditional vacations are a lawful thing, but it, I guess what you're really, you could condition it on those two, but depending on how the appraisal comes in, you would have to go to council to get it potentially. If it's over ten thousand dollars, unlikely. It can't be done administratively.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess, so I guess, I just want to say that it seems like that the twenty-four oh three ordinance, by definition, and the interpretation you provided and the intent of it, would have to exist prior to initiating a vacation, a deserted harness. Like it would have to be step one prior to this. That's what it sounds like to me, in the way you're describing it. That's all I got to say, and I appreciate the time I yield. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Howardson.
Uh, sure. Mr. Intima, can you explain, because here's what I'm missing. I mean, it seems like we have a very viable request from our respective member of our community, understanding that the process, the actual process should have been that they took it to the city manager and to the mayor for review and then the appraisal and then, and so those steps were obviously missing. I think the request is definitely something that should, is, has value and should be considered. We can kind of keep going in that circle, but we all, I think, are under the impression that there's a couple of steps missing. So please advise how to best assist our, our business owners in moving forward. I mean, we understand that this is something was a little off. I think all of us up here understand that. We understand that on this would probably a vote is required instead of the ability to table. So if you could recommend the actual process we need to take, recommend how we can do it precise and quickly and inform our constituents of what they need to be doing from step one to step whatever. But if you could just kind of tell me that so we can move this, you know, I mean, I definitely don't want to run into any more questions, but I mean, I get where we are at. And where we're at is this is not in order. And so we just need to move forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Nahar. Yeah, the simplest thing would be, really the only thing that we can do because of the way the zoning comes, is the applicant asks to continue it for thirty days while we get the appraisal done. And the mayor and the manager can confer and communicate their opinion as to whether or not there's a municipal purpose.
And then?
And then it comes back here the next, the next year or the next month. Yeah, it's a simple thought.
Perfect. Let's do that.
Well, I think, I think Toby, let's go ahead and hear, is this included, your question?
Yes, unless there's any more questions from me.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Gross.
Toby Gross, thirteen sixteen Leach Lane. Mr. Mayor, Councilor, thank you, Christina, for moving that forward. But we've turned, everything we do in Roswell, we, meaning T and T Construction and the Crumolo Group, everything that we do here in Roswell, we've done right. It's done step by step. We pay our fees, we pay everything we're supposed to do. And everything that we've touched in this town resonates, shines, and it's productive for Roswell. We were unaware of this particular step. We did turn to your staff, meaning P and Z, meaning everywhere we should have turned, and asked what we needed to do and how we needed to do it. We ended up here with not having what we need. And I assure you, we would have had what we needed before I showed up here. So I'm asking you to, I think the only way out is to do a continuance and let us get our eggs in a, in a basket, the home's Easter. And we'll come back and visit with the mayor and the city manager, Chad, and we'll get our appraisal done that will satisfy Mr. Hess and the team. And we'll be back in plenty of asking permission to do what we want to do, which is to build a beautiful Duke Ford facility. One thing that hadn't been mentioned already is that we're increasing the size of the facility by what we're doing, which is going to increase the traffic on that street. If you do a traffic study, it is probably ninety percent Roswell Ford's traffic going and coming. We don't want to take anything away from anybody. We left the one lane going through for Mr. Rhodes and for anybody that wants to go down it. It won't be impaired in any way. I ask for your help and understanding that time is of the essence. There's tariffs coming our way. I have steel orders sitting on my desk waiting to, to order, order the steel before the tariffs, if, if they do or don't, we still need to get it coming. But I ask for your consideration and extend in this case till next month. Thank you for understanding.
Is there any further comments? We have any questions? Councilor Lee? More?
I just wanted to say thank you to them. I appreciate your understanding and this process. It is, you know, we can't, we always want to blame who didn't put the paper, who brought the paper, who said what, but it is all the responsibility of the people that provide this information. We can't go snatch the paper from him or whatever. So we want to thank you for your understanding in this process. These, these couple of things that are missing, I think I didn't even have any heard of them in the eighteenths. So I appreciate your understanding. We look forward to doing a business with you. Looking forward to going to get my new, you know, my new car, get it together. But I just want to thank you for your patience and, so the thing, since he said he would be okay to, what the word did you use?
Continue.
Continuum. We had to vote on the continuum or once he said that we're...
It's, it's his as a matter of right.
So all the other experiences, just in the minutes that this is going to move on to you. So thank you, we look forward to seeing you.
I would request that if there's anything else that we need to come back and have this whole, then I would, I would like that provided to us.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll take care of that with the city manager, Mr. Hess.
Thank you.
The, um, King, yes, ma'am.
I don't want to be the devil's horse, but I will take the call for twenty-four dash zero three, not being in the pocket. I sent Meredith an email, I left that off. We realized it Monday, informed the applicant and gave them the option to postpone and go forward with this process. So I want to make that very clear. They were informed on Monday, yes, it was late notice, but we did not push them to go forward with this hearing today. We did give them the option to wait, go through the proper process and come back next month. So I do just want to make, make sure you all understand that, that we did not push this forward. So I realize that was left out and I will apologize for that, but I just want to make sure you get that.
Thank you. Councilor Laura Presse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just confused. Because if, if that road is going to be owned by, by Ford, why is it the word talking about compensation? If, if they're going to leave it open for, for traffic to go through, even, even a one-way?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, they, them leaving traffic to go through is not something the city can enforce at that point. We're, we're relinquishing our right to allow the public to travel that land.
So they, if, if, if we approve this, not, not tonight probably, but next month, they also would be able to pull it down the street?
Yes. The, the street, literally, the street will cease to exist. It will, they'll, will be their full private property in fee some absolute. And if the city wanted to reopen the street, the city would have to condemn and purchase the easement property.
Because I, I think it'd be very hard for them to, to determine as far as the traffic is concerned, who is a customer and who is not, as far as, you know, traffic is going through it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm no engineer, so I'm not going to have a little bridge, but, but ultimately, it's the mayor and the manager concurrently who have the discretion to say, yes, we agree with whatever principles were done in the traffic study.
So just the fact that it's, it's open doesn't mean that they're off the hook as far as compensation is concerned?
Correct, yeah. So what, what would be happening, the city would be giving up its right to allow the public to use it, which has a tangible value. You can think about it in the inverse. So if we have construction, we have to purchase a construction easement to put our equipment on people's land. And that has a value. And normally it's nominal, but if, if we don't, then we're subject to loss.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, there's one thing I would just like to say, when I looked, when I looked at this and I tried to look at it, I talked with some of the county officials, and they said most of their land are on different, on, they're on different easement. And they state that they go back to the owner if it's not used for a public road. And, and our, our city, our city rights are not stated in the same manner as I can see it. Because I think when you, on, on the city streets, I think there's been a few court cases that state that we own the street because there are some problems if we do, if we do work on a street that does not belong to us and we cannot use, we cannot use our city money to build a road... cannot use our, uh, city money to build a road that doesn't belong to the city. And, uh, and that's, you know, by anti-donation cost. I think because of this ordinance, I think it shall, uh, it says we shall reg, have an appraisal, and I don't think we can get away from that. Uh, the city manager and myself from our, uh, position, I think, when you read that whole ordinance there, I think we have to have that. I don't think it's something that we can get away from. Uh, I would tell you, I think that it would be, if it's possible, I don't know how quick we can get the appraisals done. Uh, I would, I would think it would, the problems we have going on right now with the tariffs, uh, if, as quick as we can get some of this done, I would, I would say that we do it, uh, get the appraisers and see what we can do. I don't know if it has to wait until the next regular meeting or if it can be in a special meeting, I don't know.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you can call a special meeting on any topic.
Well, I, I mean.
So, yeah, it, it's all the time, as long as you give the three days notice under the Easement Act.
And I, I just think, I do think that this, uh, it's a questionable thing. I don't know if he's going to put a gate on the front of the street. He can put a gate and shut it, so you can down it at any time and gate on the back door. That's all possible. It appears they're going to close the gates to the alleys off, which I assume, I don't know if that means we have to have a place to put the trash. If we were going to vacate the alleys, I think it said in the name, uh, north and south alleys from Eighth Street to Tenth Street, so those alleys will be vacated. Does that mean they're going to, uh, put gates and, and lock those up? Where are we going to pick up the trash? I don't know if that was discussed in the meeting, uh, what kind of facilities we had. I don't know. Okay. Okay, so anyway, but I don't know if they put a gate on Ninth Street or not. I mean, is that something that happens to shut it off or do they just leave it open? And, uh, then, you know, that's one question. And then what happens if somebody has an accident or something on that street? Is that our liability or is that their liability? If, if we gave it to them, it's their property and so they might want a gate. I think that's something that, and it might help them with access into the Ford place if they do that. I think those are some there, uh, but I don't, if, in looking at the problems with the tariffs and all the stuff going on, I would not be opposed if we had a meeting, a, a special meeting as soon as we can get the, uh, the appraisals and things done so we can get that done. I wouldn't say that the appraisals, you know, the city, if we're going to vacate it, we just have to figure out, make sure we get the money and that's it, and we vacate it. And I think, uh, that I would go through without a problem. I am not opposed to a special meeting if we can do it to help prevent the steal. That is, uh, I think he, I think the Ford dealership will, it will be quite an improvement. And I would, I would just caution you about, with some of the new laws on FEMA where they are going back, and if you go back in the same spot, you have to build it up to flood level. If you have to haul six feet of material in there, where a lot of that stuff was four or five feet deep, that water, that's, that's going to be a significant cost. I, but I think under the new FEMA law, the start of January first of this year, it might have to be built up to flood levels, and I think that, that might also fall in the next case we have as well about the FEMA restrictions about building back where you are. They made some changes, as I recall from one, talking with the FEMA people about what happens in New Orleans and everything else, that you don't want to have people building back in a flooded area. You know, that's, I don't know you, there's other people who'd have to look that up better than me, but, uh, so that's where we were going, and I think if we, uh, since I guess the applicant was Mr. Crum, and you represent Mr. Crum, if Mr. Gross asked that we bring this up at the next meeting, a regular scheduled meeting for sure or before that, if, if that's the way I understood it, uh, I would have a motion, I guess, to lay this on the table till the call of the chair or to the next regular scheduled meeting, that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it just goes to the next meeting as a function of law.
As a function of law.
Yeah, but you can, you can call it earlier, especially.
So, okay, then, if that's the case, then I will assume that they have been asked for continuance, and, uh, it would be, is there any objection to a continuance?
Can't object, it's, it's on the, yeah.
So it's on the applicant, so, okay, the item is continuing till the next regular meeting. All right. Okay, next we go to item twenty, uh, four, uh, case, uh, case Z O C, uh, twenty five dash zero three, hold a public hearing for zoning case, D O C twenty five oh three, request for a change from R two to R V P residential, recreational vehicle parking, uh, where the address is fifteen oh seven South Sunset.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman?
Councilor Cortez. Mr. Mayor, uh, after discussing the council, they have a potential conflict, so I would like to excuse myself. This is my.
Okay. We have, okay, and so we've had, is there any objection to Mr. Cortez being excused of a potential conflict event?
Can there be objections?
Is there any objection?
Nice to sit in the audience.
Seeing none, we're excused.
Thank you, sir. I'll be back.
Potential conflict.
I'll listen.
Okay, next, Councilor, uh, how?
Mr. Mayor, I make motion to be, have an appeal hearing for case Z O C twenty five dash zero zero three, hold a public hearing on an appeal on zoning case, Z O C twenty five dash zero zero three, for zone change from R two residential to R V P recreational vehicle park, for three point three acres and address to be assigned, fifteen seven South Sunset Avenue, leave a description. It's on this one there.
You have a motion by Council, you hear what's happened, second by?
Say.
Councilor Cavan. Okay, now we have, we have two individuals signed up to speak on this. Hopefully we can keep it within our three minute limit. We have, uh.
Got a swan.
Yes, we have to be sworn in, Mr. Gar, Jason Garcia and Mr., Mr. Frescos. So if you would both be sworn in, please raise your right hand and Madam Carter.
Do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under penalty or perjury?
I do.
Okay, they're both sworn in. Okay. Okay. Mayor, if you can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is zoning case toward Z O C twenty five dash zero 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 three, and this is a zoning case appeal. The planning and zoning commission made a decision on March fourth, twenty twenty five, and voted six to zero to rezone the three point three acre Sunset Villa A subdivision planted in nineteen sixty four from R two residential to R V P recreational vehicle park. On March sixth, twenty twenty five, a formal application of appeal was presented to the city clerk by Larry D. Frescos, agent for Moore's insurance. And this is the formal written of appeal. And this is, um, asking the city council for a public hearing to hear the appeal of planning and zoning commission, and this is the language on the appeal. Interpretation of the buffer zones for residential single family that was written on the appeal. Zoning ordinance, article three, procedures amendments and changes, section five, procedures appeals. A, appeal of a planning and zoning commission decision five. This is the language in the plan, uh, in the zoning ordinance. In making a decision on the appeal, city council shall consider only those concise and specific points on which the opponent in his or her written notice of appeal urges the city council to satisfy the decision of the planning and zoning commission. So go back. So this is the language that was on the application for appeal. Interpretation of the buffer zones for residential single family. This is the zoning map of the area. The property with the star is a property under consideration that was already approved by planning and zoning commission. This shows that the property is zoned R two. To the south is the Casomaria nursing home and a vacant piece of property also owned by Casomaria, three duplexes and three single family homes. And you can see that Riley Drive Den ends there on the south next to an apartment complex. That is also R three. To the north and to the east are Arlen, single family residential subdivisions, and on the other side of Sunset, on the west, is, um, Arlen. It's undeveloped, it's twelve acres, and then to the south of the Hondo is, uh, our four tract that's like nineteen plus acres and has a single family home. There, there is one little, there's a one single family home in a different tract just north of the Hondo here on the west side of Sunset. Oh, go back one. There's a little, there's a one residence right there on Sunset. Um, it's a, it's a rental property, and that's right adjacent to the property under consideration. And that's under the blue circle. Okay, go ahead. This is the staffo of the Rio Hondo in the alley north of the property that's not contiguous to the property under consideration. You can see it on the map up there as well. That's a, a sixty foot buffer between the property under consideration and the estate type properties north of the Hondo. You can see the aerial, where this is a, a large vacant tract, uh, under consideration and the, the adjacent land uses there on that aerial. These are staffos of the property under consideration as well as the duplex just, uh, to the, the south of it. You can also see the fences on the east side of the, the alley adjacent to the property under consideration. This is a big vacant piece of land. This is, uh, the property is in FEMA AE flood hazard zone, so it's, it's in the flood hazard zone. Might be appropriate for something that's more resilient to flooding to happen there than, than maybe other things that go there. This is the conference of master plan, the preferred land use scenario. This shows the property with the little star there, uh, on Sunset Corridor. It's a mixed density corridor. As we discussed earlier in the slides, and then it's also in the infill redevelopment opportunities area, so it does need a. This is the plat, or nineteen sixty four, the Sunset Villa A plat, and that was filed a long time ago, sixty years ago, and it's been sitting there. Oh, can you go back one, please? You can see that there's maybe, I don't know if you can see it, but there are twenty foot alley rides away on the north side, so it separates, uh, there's an alley separating the property under consideration from the subdivision to the north with a twenty foot alley ride away to the east as well, to the south as well. So it's got twenty foot alley rides away all around it, including the little house. So as of today's date, the planning and zoning office has received twelve written protest letters representing eleven properties within the one hundred foot notification area, the one indicating address of a property outside the one hundred foot notification area for the zoning case. The letters were presented to the planning and zoning commission meeting at the, on March fourth, twenty twenty five. Five people spoke in opposition or expressed concerns during that public hearing, and then the appeal was filed on March sixth, twenty twenty five. And those letters are in the packet. Based on the planning and zoning commission's March fourth, twenty twenty five, six to zero decision to approve the zone change from R two to R V P, and the appeal filed with the city clerk on March sixth, twenty twenty five, city councils requested a whole, conduct a public hearing on the appeal of the zoning case and vote to either hold or overturn the planning and zoning commission's decision, and, uh, we stand for questions.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? When I saw, uh, I think you originally only had one objection, went for P and Z. Did I read, did I read in here somewhere where you only had one, you received one written protest?
There were twelve.
Well, this is, at the time of this writing, the planning and zoning office has received one written protest and two verbal protests and zero inquiries. That's on page two fifty five, go back.
Okay.
When these protests came in, did they come in after the?
Uh, after the planning and zoning commission packet was put together, the protest letters came in.
Before? Planning and zoning? Was, was planning and zoning commission aware of those?
Yes, they were included.
They were included in their packet, okay.
They were.
I just saw the verbiage on here, and it was not consistent. What was in our package, and I wanted to know.
Okay. Those letters came in after this was posted, I believe, uh?
For the planning and zoning commission, not for this fee?
Give me one second.
Okay.
The letters, uh, the exhibit H was received on two twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
And the P and Z commission meeting was what day?
It was on March fourth.
March fourth, okay.
Yes. So these other ones were received on three, three, twenty twenty five, the day before.
Okay, because they're not dated.
The, the one on the back is.
So your exhibit B, because they, you just received them the day before the meeting then?
Yes.
They all happened to come in all at the same time?
Yes, sir. These are exhibit two.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. For that clarity. And you're saying also that this last letter we were receiving is outside the hundred foot notification?
One of them is, yes, sir.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Meredith.
So, all the members of the Planning and Zoning were able to see all these letters that were opposed to this, and what we want to go ahead and inform with this?
Yes, sir.
What was that vote?
6 to 0.
6 to 0.
Okay.
And what kind of conversation went on, and why they made that decision if they had these people who were opposed to it? Who all showed up to read, to speak? Did any of these people that wrote these letters show up to speak at that meeting?
Yes, sir.
All of them, one, two?
No, there were, there were five people who showed up to speak.
In opposition?
In opposition or have concerns. I can tell you who they were.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, if they, they had concerns and they had opposition, five of them, how many people were there speaking in favor of this zoning change?
Mr. Garcia spoke in favor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, while she's discussing this, we should have, we had, I guess, Mr. Freskus and Mr. Garcia, so everybody's talking for, needs to. Okay. Now, I didn't know, I did have one question here on one thing. It says in here that these are for RV parks. And the other, in all the, in all the protest letters, it says a mobile home park. Are they the same thing? They're not one of the same thing under the law? And so, we're, one is a facility, I guess, yours is for a RV park.
Yes, sir.
So, they can park RVs there for?
Short-term.
Short-term. And, and the other, it's not for a mobile home, can't put mobile homes on it, you can just have an RV park. Okay, and then, Councilor Arnold, you wanted to clarify something, and just, and then we'll go back, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Meredith, at the beginning of your presentation, I understood that you said that we, as this is a appellate case, we are supposed to focus on exactly what the application for appeal is regarding, correct? Okay, so, this is where I need clarification, because I'm, I'm having a whole lot, but I don't know that it actually explains why we should accept Mr. Freskus's complaint that he disagrees with the PNC's interpretation of the buffer zones. How, how is the buffer zones an issue? And I mean, that, I think, is, is actually our focus, correct? Their interpretation, they're, they're actually going against what the PNC is determined regarding those buffer zones, so I believe all of this additional information clouds my specific judgment on this specific application. So, could we, could you help me focus on what is he's, he's disagreeing with of the interpretation that Mr. Mayor, Councilor Arnold, I believe the applicant of the appeal can best discuss that with you?
Counselor Moore?
I'm sorry.
Let's go, let him go. The applicant go first.
Yeah, help us.
Okay. So, would you like?
Yeah, we have a question, Mr. Mayor.
She wants to hear what Mr. Freskus has to say.
Mr. Freskus, would you, well, let's see, we ought to let the applicant go first.
So, this is an appellate proceeding, so the person bringing the appeal goes first.
Okay.
And so, it's his burden to show that PNC's determination needs to be overturned for the reason he stated.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Counselors, thank you for your time. I'm not really sure how to address you once they explain the appellate process.
David Adderst.
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry Freskus, 606 North Kentucky Avenue, Roswell. But, uh... Those letters are protests, say, if I may address that, say, about mobile home park, because, um, that's what was thought to be going in there, regardless of why it was misunderstood or understood. But, once the residents found out it was an RV park, most of the residents in the single-family homes owned RVs that were, that spoke at the PNC meeting. And they understand what happens in an RV park, and the, the length of RVs, and the requirements you should have to be able to stop an RV, especially going over that hill over the Hondo River, to be able to turn into the facility, especially if they're towed vehicles. As far as the, the buffer, which is what I appealed on, I didn't know it would be limited to only discussing that. Nonetheless, that's what it is. I've been dealing with the Planning and Zoning Department in Roswell for 43 years, which they have a very difficult job, and I appreciate everything that they have to go through in interpreting the laws and the requirements and the opposition to any zoning that comes before them, and the rights of the property owners. Like, Mr. Garcia has every right to make an application to develop that property any way he chooses, as long as they fall into the guidelines. The property zone R2, which is, you know, low-density residential, but not quite, not restricted just to single-family, and I don't know where in the zoning laws that it says you have to have a buffer, but that's what I've been taught by planning and zoning. I served on the last two comprehensive planning committees for the city of Roswell and Chalice County, and buffers are discussed throughout all of the engineering company's education, which I understand the PNC commissioners nor the city councilors are required to go through that process. However, you're educated through your staff. But, those 22 single-family residences that bought the proposed RV park will be affected by, in their future values and their peace of living in their residences if this RV park is approved. It's more industrious and commercialized than a mobile home park. A mobile home park, in my understanding, from visiting with Louis Nehar over the years, you, you just almost can't oppose those for civil rights laws. They're, and they are a replacement of single-family homes. An RV park is people coming and going, living there temporarily. I understand the code is, actually limits them to 180 days. But, it's just the concern to the neighboring, single-family property owners, and how it will affect their future lives and their peace of living and enjoying their personal property rights as they live there. You've got generators going, people traveling on vacation in RVs. They tend to be in a party mode, they're on vacation, there's different activities, unlike what you can't prevent in a single-family residential neighborhood, I realize. But still, it's an elevated level of activity within RV park, where you have basically people coming from all over the country, passing through, and enjoying their lives at their leisure into the night. There's no ordinances against their generators or whatever entertainment they might have. Most RV parks, I notice, when I look at their marketing and so forth, like Town and Country is getting ready to have a concert in their RV park here in two weeks, which is wonderful. But, most RV parks are on the edge of a city, they're not internal. Chalice County Planning and Zoning changed their ordinance where they don't allow RV parks in flood zones, which this property is in the AE zone, and that's for safety reasons, because of, of the fact that RVs tend to get washed away in flood zones. And so, I would just, I would ask each one of you to consider, if you had an RV park that was developed in your neighborhood, you know, how would you feel about that? How would that affect your life and your family, especially people with children? And how would you deal with that? Because this is zone R2, and I can't, I can't go to any commercial property and just request to build a commercial venture there and get it approved, just, just for the sake of doing infill throughout the city of Roswell, which Meredith mentioned, the infill jurisdiction. But I don't think we should discriminate against older neighborhoods with lots of vacant land in it, and promote infill that goes against the lifestyle that people are accustomed to. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, do you have a question?
Counselor Maruho.
Mr. Freskus, we do have a noise ordinance that I don't know whether you're aware of, to combat late-night loud activities. So, to say that we, and that would be upon the property owner, not the individual staying, he would be the one that would be cited for that, just to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
The other question I have is, where are these other individuals that showed up at PNC? Where are they tonight, do you know?
Two of them are on the highway north of town. They are, they, one's a truck driver, and his truck broke down, and his wife's a bus driver, and she went out to help him. And they both own a 40-foot RV, and they spoke at the PNC meeting. Their next-door neighbor that's opposed to it, he had surgery for a brain tumor a year or so ago, so he's not always to get out. He was expecting a ride from them, he's probably 45 years old. Another one that spoke up just had some, a stroke, and he wasn't able to attend, so I don't know about the other two, why they didn't show up.
Just curious, but, yeah, they were able to.
I was, I was curious just as well, but nonetheless, it doesn't mean that they're not still opposed to it, so.
It's always good to hear the testimony, because that's what we're here doing.
Right.
And, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moore, I'll give you another chance. I'm sorry, Counselor Maruho.
I'd like to abstain, because, because of the fact that I don't very, very well, and I don't want to. You have to say that at the beginning of this.
Yeah, you have to do it at the beginning, not at the end.
You have to say this at the beginning.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is a, it wasn't judicial matter, so it needs to conceptualize as a, if you wouldn't want somebody with a conflict that an individual has ruling on a case as a judge, they shouldn't be doing it. So, judges wouldn't take cases for close personal crimes.
So, you shouldn't be excused? Well, that was one, two, three, four.
You have to have six, isn't that ten?
You have to have six.
Six.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we have the six in the bag.
In order to overturn the board, you would need six to all of us.
There are seven left.
Okay.
So, I, I would ask, I would ask, is there any objection to excluding Mr. Maruho?
What's his reading?
He said because he was a friend of Mr.... And on the advice of counsel, we should excuse him, because if he was, we're judges, and he shouldn't be judging on the basis of a friend. Is there any objection to excluding Counselor Maruho? Okay, Counselor, your excuse. Thank you. Thank you for bringing me up front.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there any other counselors that might have a conflict?
One you just left.
Well, besides, no, that are sitting up here right now, that might have some relationship with Mr. Garcia?
No, I don't. Anybody, is anybody related with Mr. Garcia, or? I grew up in the neighborhood, but I don't need to vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, for, for counsel. So, if two more of us decided that we had a conflict here?
The decision would automatically stand.
PNC decision.
And I can't vote, so it doesn't matter what I do, I can't vote on this one, this is just your counsel.
Well, I would, I would have to make a comment, this better be up here, has had some dealings at some point in time with Mr. Freskus, and so there could be a conflict amongst all of us. And, I mean, that's, that's the problem with being a quasi-judicial deal, that either you can feed that person to make that decision and not put anything else out in front of it, because, like I said, I, I mean, I could, Carlos has, Daryl has, I mean, so if we all decided to go ahead and say, I've got a conflict of interest, then this is all over with.
Yeah, and I can only give you the, you have to, it's your unconsciousness to judge it. It's, you know, would you, given your relationship with either party, want to judge ruling on a case where you're against that party?
So, that means that if you, if you decide to sit in judgment, it means you have a conscience, and if you decide not, then you don't have one.
Yeah, so, it's, think of yourself as a judge, so if you had a, I mean, the simplest way to put it out, if, if you're in a lawsuit with Mr. Freskus, you want the, you want the judge to have said what Counselor Maruho said, then would you be like, oh, yeah, totally keep that judge? Right, and that's, that's the standard.
As you said, I'm friends with both of them.
And that's, that includes both of them.
I mean, if I was a judge, I would.
Yeah, it's, it's about the, it's, it's a matter of degree.
Right.
It's a matter of you looking at whether you can judge facts and forget anything else.
Right.
Because I can, I can separate.
Yeah, so, would a reasonable person think that the friendship is so strong that he can't do it? That's what we're looking at. And I, and I don't, I can't make that choice for all of you. Typically, business relationships, though, are an automatic now, so if you have an existing one or you have a pending future one, that's a big one now. Family relationships, too.
I'm going to assume that Counselor Cortez has an actual business interest with one or either one of these, which is a real conflict, but it can't, if, if we have a personal, a personal thing for one or for the other, that's an entirely different situation. I mean, that's just my opinion.
May I ask a question? I'm sorry, you mind? So, you're, you're saying if, if six of them don't vote in favor of Mr. Garcia, it's automatic approval?
Who voted in favor of you?
Oh.
You have to have six votes.
I have got six votes.
Yes.
Well, it's real hard not to have a conflict of interest in a small town when you have relationships with everybody, you know? I voted for Christina, she's the only politician I've ever liked to put a sign in my yard.
Just keep her out of the house.
Yeah, so.
There you go. There you go.
Let me count the times you've turned me down.
Yeah. I voted for Tim Jennings for 31 of the 32 times he's ran for office. We've had that discussion. And Juan and I have served on several committees together, so, had I known that, I thought I shouldn't be here.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Because Mr. Shirts doesn't know all these people.
I don't know Mr. Shirts at all.
Yeah, so, again, in terms of Counselor Maruho, it's really, you've got to ask yourself, would a reasonable person, you were judging a case with Mr. Freskus and somebody else, think you're going to be pardoned? And if you don't think so, you, you have a duty to vote on it. But if you do think so, you have a duty to.
Recruit yourself.
Well, with integrity, if that's supposed to be integrity, that means they should all vote in my favor. Because of the, because of the zoning law, it doesn't seem clear that you could vote for the greater good of. for the greater good of the property owner and not the neighborhood. The community is supposed to be what is best served for by planning and zoning, the entire community.
The legal standard applicable in a zone change is specific, but that community interest is one candidate.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, you know, if you have, if we all would have been fair enough to vote for me 32 times.
Council Cameron.
I, I wish that would have been.
Council Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, and, and a question for you, Larry. With your reasoning, can you tell me why you had six members of planning and zoning vote for this? Since you were at that meeting and you argued it, why did they vote against you in that, in that meeting?
Um, I, not to offend anyone on the planning and zoning staff, they've got a job to do and I don't understand all of their rules. Meredith and I and Louis, we've worked together for many, many years and worked through a lot of different issues. But frankly, I mean, they make the recommendations, like Louis said earlier, they make the recommendations, they don't say what has to happen. They follow the rules presented to P&amp;Z Commission. The P&amp;Z Commission has seldom in the last 40 years had a broad education on P&amp;Z matters. The Chavas County P&amp;Z Commission has actually had several of their commissioners over the years go on to workshops for that purpose. So frankly, I don't think, to answer your question, Will, I don't think the P&amp;Z commissioners understand the rules, because you're talking about going to R2 to basically, I don't know what the zoning, an RV park is a specific zoning, right? It's not commercial, it's not industrial. But it fits right up there with commercial and industrial, it's a busy activity. I don't think the P&amp;Z Commission understood all that and the impact it has on the neighborhood. That's why I think they voted that way. Because infill is very vague in, in the comprehensive plan as to how you handle that. I mean, what is infill? Is it just because it was, the area was developed and subdivided over 50 years ago? So can I take a property in the north part of town and say, this is infill, so I want my zoning to be for an RV park next to $400,000 homes as opposed to $200,000 homes? I mean, where's the balance come in?
Well, I would, I would say I drove that area today and I don't know if I want something going on there or for it to look like it looks like today. Because I can only imagine at any given point in time, you have to put tents up around there and police officers have to go get out of those areas because you have homeless.
I think, I think Mr. Garcia's had to deal with that before with the people living up there, so I, I don't know.
So I, and, and the fact that they voted, that you had 12, 13 minutes, and they opposed it, you had people that showed up and they were opposed to it, but yet it was still passed. So that doesn't make any sense to me with all the dealings I've had with, with ETZ as you're talking about and on this, so.
Right.
Thank you for, for responding.
Why don't we hear from Mr. Garcia?
Okay.
I mean, if you want, if you care to, I mean, I'm, you know, that's your choice. You know, whatever, if you'd like. I mean, I, I think this is a, this is a really interesting thing about where this is because of the, because of floods and stuff we've been through. You know, growing up there in that neighborhood, that area could be very prone to flooding and growing up in the neighborhood. And, and, and I mean, I was, I played in that lake across the street, I fished in there, I've done everything. I've walked up and down that hondo for miles. And, but I'm, when I sit there and you say, are you, is it better off to be an RV park or homes? And my thing is an RV park, they at least have a chance to get up and get in their truck when it starts raining and leaving. Now, if your home is there, you don't have that chance. And I'm, I'm not sure, I have a great deal of concern about the new flood standards that FEMA is putting out about what's in the floodplain, about how you can have to build that. And maybe Mr. Nahar might know more about that than me. But if you have to build it up three feet, you're not going to be able to put your house on there. I mean, without an awful lot of cost to build it up. And so an RV park might, I mean, it only rains 12 inches a year here. We just, normally, we don't get it all at once. And so I'm just saying, an RV park might be the only use for that layer. So I have mixed feelings about whether you're just saying, growing up and knowing worse and knowing everybody who lives over there, whether to be, to be not, to put housing in there might be worse than putting an RV park. Because at least the RV park have a chance to get away if it rains. And, and so that's, I have mixed emotions on this and I, I just, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I think just growing up there, I know what it's like. And I've seen the foot of dirt that is right along Second Street, all across in front of Duane Green's house. It's a foot deep under that thing, full of blow sand, because it all blew across there because of that. We had that one other time when I was there, it raised the, we had blow sand fill up in front of our house in 1208 Avenue de Nelsombray. It filled up the yard three inches. And I cut the yard, I had to push through all that stuff and wait for the grass to grow up. So I do remember that kind of stuff happening and, but I, I, I just don't know that they'll be able to put houses there. So in some respects, I think, I can feel his way is the best opportunity for use of the property rather than leaving it empty. And I, I don't know, but I, I don't know if Louis knows anything about the law they passed, but they, they don't want to be building houses back in floodwater, is my understanding of it.
That's still telling you build another law.
Well, they build it up a flood, but you can't, you can't act that stuff very good. Okay, I'll be quiet. Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, just.
Well, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. My name's Jason Garcia, I live at 4900 Thunderbird Road, Roswell, New Mexico. And I do have my notes prepared to speak, but I wanted to address a couple of things prior to me going through these bullet points. I did not understand or recognize the contention that this little piece of land has been for the last 60 years. And I've owned it for about five. And I'll tell you that I've come under attack on numerous occasions by Mr. Larry Freskus, this last one being the most orchestrated effort that he's done. And we have not seen Mr. Shirts. And if you look at the county accessories page, Mr. Shirts is buying up land all over Roswell and he's not done one thing with any of those vacant lots. And so I just want you to keep that in consideration, is that's not healthy for Roswell. So there are rules and, and guidelines for all RV parks. And one of those is to have a fence put around it. And there's low lighting efforts that I have in place in my plan. And it mitigates a lot, if not, almost everything that was in the 12 contentious letters and the five folks that got up to speak, barring the bumper zone. My mitigation procedures addressed all of those concerns. Some of those were, had to deal with drinking that's already going on, apparently in the alleyways in their neighborhood. I asked you to look at that, that apartment complex that's a block away, that's been vacant for probably 10, 15 years, that looks like a heroin den. Nobody's doing anything about that and I don't hear any complaining about that at the moment. Anyway, I'm, I'm looking to beautify this area and do something with it. And Mr. Mayor was absolutely correct in that the, the considerations, which there are many, cost of building, the flood zone, the, the fact that I will have to build it up regardless of what goes in that property. And then just the shortage of RV spaces that we have in Roswell. So my, my assistant, that's what I call him, helped me go around Roswell, count RV spaces. And if I, let me back up. I've been in contact with an RV architect that does this kind of thing to help lay out a very efficient plan for an RV park. And so because it's only 3.3 acres, our planning factor is give or take about 50 slips. So it's not a huge RV park. But even with the 50 slips, when you go around Roswell and count the RV spots that are available, and this is, you know, rough numbers, this is a 20% increase in RV availability within Roswell. And so when you're looking at Reno Air Race, critical shortages of housing, I think that that's a significant increase, that it would be helpful for a lot of different tourism events that happened in Roswell, that we're bringing to Roswell, the UFO Festival, Eastern New Mexico State Fair, Reno Air Race, obviously, and things like that. And so my plan is to have a very small, clean, short-term monitored RV park that has rules and it has onsite supervision. And so I just wanted to kind of address that first. I have been working with the Small Development Office down at Eastern and that's kind of where I came up with this plan, because originally I was going to do something else with that property. But I've gone through many iterations of brainstorming, looking at business plans, looking at best use scenarios for a piece of property of that size in that location. And I did come to the conclusion that an RV park would be a good use of that piece of property. It does fit the infill, which I hope that that's important. It fits into the master plan. It will utilize existing utilities that are very, very close. It increases the city's tax base. It addresses the accommodation challenges that we're going to face real fast. It was, it was plotted in 1964, as we've already heard, and nothing's been done of it. It does collect illegal dumping on a regular basis that I have to contend with. It's often overgrown with weeds, which is a very, it's a challenge for me to keep that moaned down. It attracts lots of reckless driving and stirs up dust almost on a daily basis. It does not prohibit anyone from speeding up and down those alleyways at the moment. And so I've got mitigating factors that have to go to be really eliminated, probably 99% of that stuff. So I, I went out and I pulled some small RV park plaits or gorgeous designs. Not that that's what I'm going to do, but that gives you an idea of kind of what it would look like for about 50 slots. And like I say, once I get an architect to help me draw it out, map it out with the right spacing and all that kind of stuff that goes with it, it may come down to 40. I mean, I don't know at the moment, but to give you an idea, a small RV park looks kind of like that. If you would go to the next one. This is a very small one in Stillwater, Oklahoma. It's, it's a pretty cool layout, very clean. I don't see any partying going on. And to your point, there are ordinances. We do have a police force, I believe, here in Roswell. I don't believe any of the contentious people that came to talk have contacted the police in regards to their complaints of drug use, excessive drinking, loud noise, speeding. Not one of them has come to the city council meeting to complain about their neighborhood. And none of them said that they had contacted the police, yet they were going to tell me that I was going to bring that to their neighborhood. So, back to the point, small, clean RV spaces is what I envision. Thanks. So I will just end this with, I'm an NMI graduate, I'm a combat veteran and I'm a proud fourth generation Roswell resident. And I'm asking you to strongly consider approving this because it's going to help Roswell and its economy. Any good questions?
Okay. Do you have any questions of Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
Questions?
Would you plan this, will it be someone, an attendant there all the time or do you?
My plan is to have an onsite attendant that lives on, on property. And it is going to be full hookup, so this, this, there should not be generators. This is not a dry camp, it's full hookup. And so I don't, I know there's a lot of buzz about RV parks going in around Roswell and there are probably some people doing some planning. Most of those, if you ask them, are dry camps with little to no improvement of the surface. So what is that? Just open your, your pasture for some, for some campers? No mitigation on, on trash, noise, all that stuff. In my case, you plug in, there should be no generators. If that becomes an issue, as an owner, I can, I can levy a no generator policy. But my intention is not to disrupt the neighborhood and we've already heard that there's empty 60-plus feet all the way around and there's a fence and, and so on and so forth.
Do you have sewer hookup as well?
Yes.
Sewer urban?
Yes, that's the intent. Water, sewer, electricity.
Okay, any further questions?
We have a question for Freskus.
Mr. I, uh, Mr. I to vote.
So when we vote on this, a yes means we vote for the appeal and a no means we are against the appeal.
Correct, so if you, a vote yes is to overturn P&amp;Z.
And P&amp;Z voted 5 to 1, 6 to 0.
6 to 0.
In favor. Okay, so is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I don't see any testimony from you in my packet.
No, there was no written testimony on this one. I did give testimony at the hearing, P&amp;Z Commission, the life compliance commission. The concern that they had with people crossing across the empty field, speeding, noise, all that kind of stuff, all that is covered under RVP ordinance. I did explain to them, and it's been explained to you, there is a noise ordinance, so this is in the city limits. There is supposed to be a solid fence at the backside of this property and there's a 20, 25-foot alley between them and the, and the residents, the R2 homes or the R2 zoning. And then the other thing that came up was, it was talked about traffic on Sunset. I said, with or without this RV park, traffic on Sunset is a problem. And that was, that was the gist of my testimony to P&amp;Z Commission.
So you're saying that, that traffic is no, this will not impact traffic at all on Sunset?
It will impact traffic a little bit, but Mr. Garcia has already conceded when we started developing it, that he's willing to put in a turn ring to help with the turning of the.
You would make a condition of that?
Yes, got to hear about council. If you can go back to the, the map of the property. Excellent, yeah, there. So if there's a little dog like to the left?
Yep.
I would allocate part of that as, as a waiting period, so they could watch for traffic in both directions.
Right.
So that they're not just pulling directly out into traffic, they're in, they're in a preparatory mode to, to make that, that move once.
You know, with 40-foot vehicles.
Roger.
Okay, so as long as that's a condition, you would be willing to accept?
Yes.
Or have accepted?
Yeah, it was part of the recorded session at P&amp;Z.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, now if we can get this, just so everybody gets it. A vote of yes overturns the buying of zone decision. zone decision to allow the RV park. A vote of no allows, allows the RV park to stay. Does that agree with everybody? Okay, if the clerk would call the roll, now it takes six votes to overturn. Okay, so that, I mean, there's only seven of, seven of them, all right? No, eight, two, four, eight. So it takes? So no, Baru's out, so it's seven. And so it takes, okay, Baru's out, so we excused him, so it takes it. There's seven people voting. Takes six yes votes to overturn, or to overturn the RV park and leave it the way it is, right? Okay, if the clerk would call the roll.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Haldemran?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
No.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
I vote of one to six.
Six to one.
Six to one. Your decision to overturn this has been denied. Okay, thank you all very much. I'm sorry to take, it took so long, but thank you all very much. Okay, next item 25, to consider recommending approval of five-year contract for $496,350 to Paladin drones. Halverson.
Mister Mayor, I consider recommending approval of five-year contract to be totaled down to $496,350. For $496,350.
Second by, we have a motion by Council Lady Halverson. And second by Counselor Kevin. Yes, sir?
Yes, Your Honor. Police Department is requesting permission for the five-year contract with Paladin drones for $496,350. The first year is $30,000 more, that is to purchase an additional dock and drone. This would give us a total of three docks and drones that would be strategically placed throughout the city. One would be placed at Fire Station Three, 2800 North Bullshire. One is currently placed at the Roswell Police Department, 120 West Second, and Fire Station Five at 117 West Gale. With those locations, the average response of the drone is three miles. We would be able to cover almost every square inch of the city for any public safety need that would arise for the drone, both for the fire department and the police department. Currently, we do have two DJI drones that the police department utilizes. Paladin has been the only one that has been able to integrate our current fleet of drones into their software. There were some questions earlier from the different committees. One was about a $2 million insurance policy. I confirmed that with Paladin and the legal department, that that is just the overall amount of insurance that the city has to have per incident. It's not for the drone specifically. It's just in case there is an incident that the city has at least $2 million of insurance, which after the flood, we know we have. The contract also talks about lost and damaged drones. That is, will not alleviate the city from the contract if the damage, the drone is damaged or lost or anything. They will replace it, we must continue on with the contract for the duration of the contract. We did double check with purchasing, there is nothing in state, state contract for drones or Paladin for DJI or the docks in and of itself. And based on the commitment that the police department has had with the DJI drones over the last six years, and Paladin has been the only one that we've been able to find that can integrate our current fleet into their software system to let us continue to utilize, utilize it. It would be a significant cost to the police department and the city to replace those drones that are still viable today. I stand for any questions.
Any other questions?
I just, Counselor? Mister Mayor, I just want to make it clear, in the abstract, it says that the payments that we do may be issued and then we pay for public safety amelies, public safety tax. That is not how it was talked about at Finance Committee, that it was to be a line item in their budget and not to be allocated specifically out of the public safety tax, just to make it clear.
Yes, the, the abstract was submitted prior to?
Right, I just want the rest of the council to make sure that, that what came out of Finance Committee was changed from, from the abstract.
Yes.
I can go. I know Lieutenant Frye, so I can go. Just a pass.
You know, Lieutenant Frye called me, you're under, and I'm going to make a charge. Counselor Lady, Counselor Johnson?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, in our conversation and finance, we wanted to make sure that we were in alignment with our procurement law. And because this meets our, you know, exceeds our $60,000 threshold, does this pass, I mean, is this a pass muster? I mean, shouldn't this go out for an RFP from the onset? And, I mean, it's conditional because you've already got one, and now you want to keep the whole fleet with that, if, you know, if I'm understanding this correctly? But does it still violate our procurement?
Mayor Dan, it's Counselor Johnson. This will be, it's kind of a blessing that this will be submitted through the sole source approval of the state, so if it's approved, then it's approved. And if it's not approved, we would have to go up to bed.
Okay, but is, but we'll have the sole source approval attachment as a, as supporting document?
Yes, yeah, no, no, it will be issued until there's a sole source.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions? It, in our testimony that you gave before this in, in Finance, I believe it was Finance or Public Safety, but the, the reason, one of the main reasons you want is you already have existing drones and they will be kind of grandfathered in and moved into this system. They're all used with the same equipment, so it saves on, on warranty and everything else with all the drones you have will all be in the same, controlled in the same exact manner as each drone.
Correct.
For this five-year period?
Yes, the police department purchased a DJI drone about six years ago. We've seen some success with it. About three or four years into that, we purchased another one, and then just last year, we purchased the third one, and they're all DJI drones. This will allow us to operate them through one system. We won't have to switch between systems, between the different software platforms, the different makes and models. It'll be very one cohesive system, which in an emergency situation is exactly what we want.
Very well spoken, sir.
Mister Mayor, just a couple of questions. Lieutenant, Lieutenant, how many drone pilots does the police department have?
Currently, we have three Part 107 pilots and then two other pilots that are authorized under the COA that Paladin drones had prepared and filed with the FAA. With this, I believe this will be the catalyst to really get our real-time crime center off the ground and hire two civilians to monitor the cameras and operate the drones on a very regular basis. Because of the COA that we have with the FAA, all we need to do is train them in-house. They don't have to be fully Part 107, so that would help ease some of our training requirements as well to get them up and running.
And that change to a civilian pilot on your police force, how does that affect, what are the effects of that?
The, the biggest effect it would have is the police team concept. So if an officer sees something, they live live stream of the drone, they can, another officer can act on it as if that second officer had seen it firsthand. Because this is, would be a civilian relaying any live information. If another officer did not see it, they can take it under consideration, but they cannot act on it as if the officer had seen it directly. Very similar to if a dispatcher hears an argument or a strike or a gunshot over the phone, we can use that as information, but we can't necessarily act directly on it. This system allows us to also stream to various computers, cell phones, and so we can have a situation where, very recently, one of the actual deployments we had was a barricaded subject, we were able to livestream the aerial video to the SWAT commander, so he was watching it. So if that SWAT commander then sees it, relays it to his officer, they can then again act on it as the police team concept. It also allows, with the Paladin drones, it allows the unlimited data for storing of video, so we can always store all the video, go back and watch it afterwards, and then act on that either through a warrant or continued investigation.
Or provide to, like, just record it or?
Absolutely, yes. So all of that will be used and disclosed. We have a digital evidence management system, and Paladin is compatible with that, so we're able to download it, download it in MP4 video, upload it in the digital evidence management system, and then it's disseminated appropriately.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I appreciate what you guys do. It's very modern, and I appreciate what it does for you guys' capacity and ability and safety of the public.
Well, the technology is incredible, and this is, this is really the walk stage in the next couple of years, technology's going to be running.
Yep, thank you.
Any further question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And this is more of a statement, but this technology, this real-time crime setup center, if we had what we have, or what we're fixing to have, it's a real high probability that my son Chance wouldn't have gotten shot a year ago, a year behind the big old tire, because with state police pursuits, everything else, he stops there, you have a filter, but you know where it goes, and you communicate that to those officers that are trying to track him. So this stuff right here is, is state-of-the-art technology that's definitely not only taking care of court stuff with criminals, but will help protect our law enforcement, firefighters, and ammunition.
Very soon, very soon after the installment of the first docking drone, we had vehicles receiving, and the officer was able to back off, and we were able to track the suspect with the drone, and exactly what should have happened to reduce the liability for the police department, the danger to the community happened. The suspect noticed he was not being chased anymore, he slowed down, he was actually stopping at stop signs. We were able to track him down into a less dangerous area where we were intended to take down. So yes, the technology is out there. There's been multiple, multiple other situations where it already has aided us and helped us and made our, our job so much safer. And there's other times that I can speak personally that it would have benefited us and made our job safer as well, in addition to Sergeant Captain.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
You know, in looking at your map up here, now, I understand I can look and I can see the runways at the airport, and I see your coverage area in there. Is it possible with these drones to block out runway areas where you can move this circle to cover more of that base?
So the airport's kind of a tricky spot because of the regulations of the FAA and the height restrictions and all that. So that map actually gives us what I think is truly the best coverage because, again, this is the average response of a three-mile drone. We can push it a little bit farther if we need. Again, from the police department, I've already flown the drone to Brasher and Sunset, which you guys know is pretty far, and then even to Briar Ridge. We do have another drone that we can field deploy, where if there's an incident at the base, which we've already done, we can fly that one a lot easier, and then it won't consume as much battery like to get down there. We can drive it down there, launch it from a field, let it get the max flight time to observe the incident, and then land it right back in, in that same general area, and then abide by all the FAA regulations. If there was a situation like a massive fire, I think maybe two years ago down at the base, we can make a couple phone calls to the tower and to the, into the FAA, into the airport, excuse me, airport staff, make sure there is no flights coming in, and then we have a little bit more free reign due to the emergency situation.
Yeah, okay, I'm just looking at your coverage area inside the base. There, there's, there's a lot of activity out there, and I need there, we need to have some, if it's at all possible, some better coverage in the, in the base. In any sense, well, the airport, I know, but it's all out there, all those houses out there. So the base are out there.
With the docks and drones, we'd be able to reach just right into side of the base with it. We, again, we butt up to the FAA regulations where you can only fly 100 feet above, which is a little bit more dangerous with power lines, trees, and then with the visual line of sight, so we would do a field deployment that was necessary at the base. But we've flown it out with the county already after following other stolen vehicle, we were able to clear a dairy, which was very useful. One of our agents were getting confronted by a cow, and it was kind of nice to have a drone, be able to clear quite a bit of area and not have to deal with a cow with it much.
What type of cow?
I don't know. He said it was a black.
That's him.
It was a spotted.
It was a rangy cow, those dairy cows now are too hostile.
If I should ask this in public safety?
Or cow was?
If they get too far, will they land? If they start running out of battery, will they land?
Yes.
Do they have a detection to make sure they don't? Because I know when I used to have a drone, it would hit the power lines. Well, I've never hit one that time. This has a detection though now?
Yes, there's, there's several feature, safety features that are built in. The average response is at 300 feet. We've surveyed from the drone at 300 feet, and we've not found any obstacles that high. It can go as high as 400 feet, so if we need to adjust, we can do that. It constantly is calculating how far away it is from home versus how much battery life it's going to take versus on the weather. Far more stuff than I can calculate in my head, and it will return to home on its own. When that does happen, you can do what's a hot swap. We are able to change out the batteries very quickly, launch a backup. I think the fastest we got was about 90 seconds. Another thing that we had not too far from the police department, when the drone returned to home, we'd hot swap the batteries, it would back over the scene in about five minutes. So we lose a little bit of coverage in that time, but in an hour and 47 minutes standoff, we did a hot swap for six times. So, you know, 30 minutes out of an hour and 47 minutes is all we lost. And if we have additional docks and drones, then we can actually start to kind of seesaw where one gets in place before it returns to home. Okay, now this one's ready to come down, we can put number two back and, and just, we could, with enough practice and proficiency, we could get 100% coverage.
Technology.
So about 30 minutes in a row, on a flight?
There, right now, it, it's about 20 to 25 minutes of flight time. So again, the close, the wind, all types of things. So the closer that it is to the, to the dock, the better it is, because then we can get more time flying over the incident rather than flying to the incident. But again, I, I've flown to Brasher and Sunset, checked out an officer that was on traffic stop, watched him do field provided tests for a few minutes, recorded the entire thing, which was kind of a cool angle for the prosecution, and then it returned home.
Big brothers watching.
I have to make an apology to Lieutenant Frye, called me this morning for, asked for clarification, I gave it to him, I said, this won't take very long, he'll be out of here. But. I'm going to call for the question. Let's go.
Okay, is there? Okay, for item, Counsel Lady Alverson's motion to pass item 25, the five-year contract for the Paladin drones, if the clerk would call the roll? The voice vote? All of the members signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Sergeant. All right, okay, let's get going here. Now, item 26.
City manager?
City manager.
Got 27.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be very quick. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I want to share some good news and some thank yous with you. We recently, as of today, received an insurance payment on the air sale of East Building that burned down, so we'll be able to start demo on that with that insurance payment, so that they actually handle a little bit of that today. So thank you, Municipal League, and our Allen Hubler with Municipal. IT moved into Building 92 at the airport yesterday, so they are no longer next to Jazzercise and half a conference room at the Aquatics Center. So I know their field, and would thank Parks and Recreation for helping to move them out to those offices, and Bobby Thompson and her team for finding that spot, making some repairs and getting it available to our IT department so they can have a, a office without Jazzercise and all sorts of things going on. Pylons have been approved on the airfield by FAA. Big thank you to Xcel Energy, they're going to drop those pylons in for us. They're just going to drop them in, and I'm going to remove them, replace the cans on them, but still. Mike McCloud and his group have done fantastic events, that's going to happen in the next two weeks. Big thank you to Andrew Valdez and his team. A big thank you to Andrew Valdez and his team, Frank Brum, Brumcon with Streets and his team, they're putting in water and roads and parking, and you'll notice that going on at the potential RV sites, and not potential RV sites, the RV sites going out at our airport, and that's going to be the heavy revenue side for the city, is all those VIP with water and electric. Bobby Thompson's issuing a PO to change your electric, to get that started for electric, moving out of streets and water, and that's great. A big thank you to Facility Maintenance for our visitor's center, that'll be open next Tuesday. It's, I think you're going to be really impressed at how they job redoing the subfloor, the floor, the drywall, the paint, all of those things. And also, a big thank you to Counsel Cortez, he's been helping us with our GIS mapping, we're mapping out all of our water meters, or that's the plan, is to map out all of our water meters in the city with some usable data along with our fire hydrants, and I appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you. I would just like to say also, for the staff working together to get, to get that bill passed in 383, our legislators and staff has, and everybody, I want to thank everybody for getting that done. You know, it's going to give us 75 million bucks or somewhere about that area, hopefully, so we'll have enough money to where we can get in line at FEMA and start looking to move forward. We're going to have to get some money, because we're going to have, we've got to figure out if what we're going to do, as soon as FEMA gives us the okay to do it, to find out, you know, what we do on a mu, on a museum, and what we do on the, get the civic center going, and I think the 75 million will be enough to get us all in and get those two main facilities up and running as soon as possible. And I want to thank you all for all the working on that and helping us with all that, and the staff, everybody worked real hard for it, and it was really, it was an old hat for me, kind of, in some respects, but we spent a lot of time up there, driving back and forth, cost me a car and everything else, I, hopefully, I can put that on my expense account. You guys, go ahead and approve that. But, you know, it's, other than that, you know, it hasn't been too bad. But I have to put that on my, you have to pay me for mileage now?
Sure.
Just pay me for the car, mobile. All right, we all, thank you very much, is anybody?
I just want to say one thing. Mayor has spent a tremendous amount of time in San Francisco, and I don't think anyone understands, the public doesn't know what he's done up there and was able to accomplish. And I applaud him on his efforts for this community, otherwise, we would be sitting around twiddling our thumbs here, where, what are we going to do, where's the money coming from? But the mayor was instrumental in getting those things passed up in San Francisco, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, guys. And you know, I think right now it's appropriate time to do a motion, us will be, we'll be here as long as Jenny Corrigan may stay. All those, the motion, adjourn, all in favor?
Okay, we're done.